Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for August 14, 2013. I'd like to call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the approval of meeting minutes July 24, 2013.
Just to open up, I'll move approval of the minutes of July 24, 2013.
Mr. Chairman, I had just a couple of minor corrections on the minutes that I sent to Paula, and we're just passing around right now. They're very minor.
So you want to put in the time change on number five? Do you have these changes? Okay, I'm good with these.
Time change on five, and what else?
It's just adding in the times we started the executive session. They're in the executive session, the minutes.
Yeah.
I think they should just be in both sets of minutes. So they can be read independently of each other.
Okay. So I'll move to accept the minutes of July 24, 2013 as amended.
Second.
Motion made in second, in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Next item on the agenda is the future meeting dates. So we're going to meet on the 21st. And then after that, it'll be in September. And I know I'm gone on the 5th of September, which is Thursday. We want to— Tom, you're good for Thursdays in September?
In September, I'm good for Thursdays, yeah. So I am good on the 5th.
I'd actually be gone on the 5th.
Okay. The 4th—I could probably change it, but I do have a meeting in West Haven, Connecticut, that night. I'm open on the 3rd.
We have to meet the Warren Committee on the 4th.
On the 4th.
Is the 3rd good for you, Katie?
I'm good on the 3rd.
You're coming back that day?
I'm coming back that day, so I wouldn't be able to prepare an agenda for you. I would have to—
Be lying, Paula.
I'm sure Paula would be able to handle it just fine.
Paula's capable hands.
I'm in charge.
Okay, so we're good for the 3rd?
Good for the 3rd.
3rd is good.
You want to do another— seventeen— or go back to the—
Thursday, the 19th.
Nineteenth?
That's fine on me.
Mr. Chairman, I mentioned to the town administrator—we had a—we were talking about the meeting schedule, and what I'm finding—I've only been on the board for three months—you've all been on a lot longer—but what I'm finding is with two meetings a month and some pretty long agendas, where either—we had one meeting where we were just a couple of hours. Most of them are pretty long. And the town administrator told me that years ago, the board used to meet weekly. And I'm— weekly might be too much, but I'm wondering whether we should meet three times a month and have shorter meetings. That way—I think there's some advantages to that, because rather than having 25 items on an agenda, and we get the packages of materials two nights before the meeting, there's a lot to read in those two nights, especially if you have a meeting in an in-between night or—so my suggestion would be that whether we start in September or put it off till later, we think about whether we want to meet two nights a month, or whether we want to increase that, and hopefully have somewhat shorter meetings, or have more time to address, you know, the topics in more detail, not—sometimes we have an item on the agenda, and we wind up maybe not spending as much time as we'd want, because there's 15 other things on the agenda after it. So I think we might think about how we plan out our meeting schedule.
Just comment on that?
When you were on the board—obviously, you're the longest on the board—were these agendas this long at the beginning?
I think they probably were. I mean, you tend not to forget the pain, but yeah, they probably were. I mean, they are what they are. And I don't have any problem going to more frequent meetings. I did talk to Anne-Marie about this. One of the things that we've had on our back burner that we haven't really brought out yet is an attempt to turn over some of the—at least some of the smaller items over to the town administrator, so they don't become board issues, like, you know, signed permits for—
Signed approvals.
Road races, and, you know, that kind of thing, that will tend to shorten the agenda, at least. But until we get to that, sure, I don't have a problem. Although September, I think, would be a problem, because we're all traveling all over the place in September.
Right. I think it might be worth entertaining for October, Katie.
Yeah, and I agree that we want to transfer some responsibilities from the board to the town administrator. I think we're waiting on the DOR report, too, to get some—
Yeah, yeah.
—further ideas on that, and move in that direction. And the other thing that Anne-Marie and I have talked about is the board materials. Maybe having three or four days rather than two nights—
Be nice.
—to get those, so that there's more time to read them, more time to make phone calls if needed, do the due diligence that we have to do before a meeting, because I'm—
That's a very good point.
Just finding there's a lot to do in two days, and we're all working. Some of you travel more than—I do, but—
It does get difficult.
It does, and I think to do the job the right way, we really need a little more time. So no—if we have short—if we have more frequent meetings, shorter meetings, then maybe two nights is fine for the packages to arrive. But I'm thinking that there may be a better way.
Now, I know one suggestion is coming out of the government's—the DOR—or it's probably coming out of the DOR report—is probably a recommendation to move our meetings to a Tuesday night as opposed to a Thursday. I believe—at least they mention that. And then to have the board packets come out, so they'll be available over the weekend. And that way, technically, the payroll warrants get signed on time. You know, so that might help.
I think the weekend to review the materials is a good suggestion.
So we could begin to send your agenda packets out on Friday? So you have the weekend?
Ideally, that would be perfect. Because we all do have jobs outside of this job, and it's a lot of work when you come—
Do we?
Well, at least I do. You get your money made. But, you know, to come back at night, have to sit down for a few hours, read all these agenda items, and then be here till midnight some nights, you know, for meetings. It's a lot of work.
I think we're all in agreement.
So could—like, one possibility would be to still go with the 1st and 3rd, Thursday of the month, and add one. Could we do that? If necessary, add one? Versus just scheduling?
Some make the last—the last Thursday of the month, or the last Tuesday of the month afloat, if it looks like that agenda's getting too long to—
Push some of the item to last, sure.
Sometimes we may not need it.
That's right, depending on the time of the year, too.
Yeah.
There's busier times than others.
Right.
So when we get to the second Thursday—
Yeah, on the second Thursday, you could push stuff off to the—
Exactly.
—Thursday after that, and then if you need to, push it off to the—
To the 1st again?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
That works.
We'll discuss that again.
So we're adding September 3rd, and what was the other date, the 19th?
19th, yeah.
All right. Number four on the agenda is citizen speak. Anyone here for citizen speak? Okay.
Hi, I'm Phil Joe Henning, 23 Parkwood Drive, Milton.
Hi, Philip.
I just wanted to bring you guys quickly up to date since the meeting on the 24th about our activities in the Milton Committee against aviation impacts. What we did was, we raised the $450 filing fee. We took our appeal against the finding of no significant impact for runway 33L southbound departures to the First Circuit Court of Appeals, and we filed it. I think we have a decent case against that, particularly when you look at the amount of flight traffic that flies over our town. Additionally, we met, and Anne-Marie joined us with Tom Glenn, the CEO of Masport, and talked about the issues that we face in Milton. I can't say that he was particularly receptive, but I have noticed that we don't have airplanes tonight, so maybe he was listening. I don't know. I guess the other point after the discussion in the last meeting is that if the town wishes to do something involving the fours, I think we should all work in concert. I think all of us have some very good ideas about what kind of approach can be made. And I think we're all willing to give help to the town. I guess the town would just need to make clear its goals, its objectives, how it wants to proceed, and will be totally on board with you, and help in any way we possibly can. I find that our committee is full of, like, knowledgeable people, very capable, very energetic, and, you know, I've learned a lot about the town in working with them. In fact, some of the call takers at Masport have been saying that Milton citizens are educated—educated citizens, like, educated about airplane noise, airplane routings, wind direction, et cetera. So I take a lot of pride in that, too. So I don't expect to discuss this now, but in the event that the town would want to proceed in some form or fashion relating to the fours, I think we need to strike while the iron is hot. I think we have a certain amount of momentum, a certain amount of interest, and we wouldn't want to wait until that chilled. So that's all I really have to say.
And we will be discussing it in item 17 on the agenda.
Thank you.
Anyone else to citizen speak? Okay, moving on. Next is the—we have a public hearing for a grant of location Milton Hill Road. I'd like to welcome up the representatives from NSTAR. You could introduce yourselves, please.
Good evening. Rick Shaforni from NSTAR Electric.
Sheila Gillis from NSTAR Electric. Hi.
The issue was that we're under the assumption that you opened a street without a permit, and that's according to our DPW director. And your representative Sheila, is it—
Sheila.
—the last time was sent in here to say that you actually had the permit?
Different work or something, wasn't it?
I think he said you had a permit or—
If I may—
Yeah.
What had happened was, in 2011, September 14—uh, no, September 14, 2011, there was an emergency dig on the road to service number 34. That was the—Milton Hill Road, right now, is being fed what we call split fiber main. It's an old electrical system where the conduit is essentially direct buried, and those were put in in the 20s to 40s, so they're getting old and starting to fail. And we have a program—a capital program—to go out and replace it all across the state, where every place that we have it. And it's because of problems like this, where it fails without notice, that we have to go in there and do a dig. That dig was just a repaired dig. It was about 200 feet long to bring number 34 back up and give their service back. What Sheila is presenting in the petition is to resolve the issue on the whole street. We were going to put a manhole in, duck bank to feed all the houses, and eliminate the split fiber. That way, if you ever have a problem in the future, you can just go in and pull the cable out of the conduit and feed it back to the house. Whereas when split fiber fails, it actually burns, it has to be dug up, turned off, and replaced. So that's where the confusion was. I do have copies of the DigSafe permit that we pulled back in 2011 to fix number 34. But that wouldn't necessarily need a new grant, because it was just replacing the existing line that was feeding number 34.
So in an emergency, you don't need a permit? You just—
We go out and we fix it under a DigSafe permit.
So a DigSafe permit will supersede a local permit?
No, there should still be a local dig permit to do that work. There wouldn't be necessarily a 166 grant-a-location request from the town, but there should be, you know, either before or after the fact, permit requests with the Public Works.
Right. Was that permit granted by the town of Milton?
That—I actually, I'm not sure on that.
For the emergency?
Yes, the emergency—we—it was dug on an emergency, so that would—they would go out there and fix it, but then they should go, "we."
But you wouldn't need a grant-a-location, you're saying, which would be a board side—
A grant-a-location's a whole separate animal.
Yeah.
That's—that would be new lines and manholes.
Right.
And that's what we're here for today. This was just a replacement existing, but—
All right, so that's different, yeah, okay.
Yeah. As far as this goes, but I will close the loop on that and get the actual permit that was pulled for the town to do that.
Okay.
Because we still would do an after-the-fact permit with the town, just let them know that we're out there digging.
Okay. Yeah, that would be helpful. I mean, I think we can act on this, so, tonight.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah. All right. So I will propose the motion to approve a request for NSTAR for permission to construct a location for such line of conduits and manholes with necessary wires and cables there and to be located under Milton Hill Road westerly, thence turning and running northeasterly approximately 40 feet northwest—northeast of Adam Street, a distance of 320 feet at pole 234/1, build one manhole, MH 28152, and a new handhole at a—at the private property line.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
I guess the only question I would have is in terms of—and not really being that familiar with Milton Hill Road, is that a newly paved road, or is that—I mean, are we digging up the road itself, or—
Yeah, we'll be digging up the road.
Okay, and obviously repairing it, but is that a newly constructed road, or is that a—
This work is already done, right?
No, this work we'll be doing. We'll be putting the manhole in and the remaining conduit in.
What was done was the emergency repair?
Yeah, I think it was the Adam Street that was actually newly paved.
Adam Street definitely is newly paved.
And that way, it is. So that's why originally, we were going to go to a manhole out on Adam Street.
Okay.
This way here, we're just going to that—an existing overhead pole at the end of the street, and rising up to get our primary to that to feed this area.
Okay.
So we won't have to break into Adam Street.
Okay. Can I just ask our DPW director, Joe, are you aware of Milton Hill Road—
If you can come up for a second, Joe. My understanding was that this work was done—
The emergency portion.
I understand the emergency portion of what the DPW said. The whole—the whole job was done without a permit. That's what we were discussing.
Yeah, the—granted-location permit has a sketch associated with it, and it just happens to be in the same exact locations as where the former—
Emergency.
—infrastructure's located. So when John went out and looked at it, he sees the old trench work, and it's evident that the work had previously been done. He did go back and look at prior permits, and we don't have any record of any after-the-fact permit, which is what would typically happen on an emergency. We do know that back in that era, late fall into the winter, there were some serious concerns with, you know, returning the restoration of the roadway to something that was suitable for plowing. It was that much disturbance. So John was very confident that that wasn't done back then. I think the simple thing is, is the grant-a-location, it's new infrastructure proposed in a public way, which is a public way. It does need a grant-a-location, that's what they're asking for. The formal work, permit requirements need to be fulfilled, and any work that they're proposing under this needs to have a permit pulled, and those terms fulfilled. So the grant-a-location's pretty easy for you—from your perspective. It's the restoration standard that gets worked into the actual permit that we issue.
Right, so that's what I want to make sure is—if we're taking up the whole street, that we want to—yeah.
Clean up the old permit, and the new permit will reflect the restoration standard.
Our streets are bad enough, we don't want to make them any worse.
Milton Hill was resurfaced about 10 years ago. It's not in pristine condition. Most of your infrastructure is coming down one side, going across diagonally, and then down the other side. So it's that crossing that's going to be critical, and you made me feel better than it, because Adam Street is brand-new, and I don't want to rip that up. And the fact you're going to be grabbing off of that first pole and not getting it to Adam Street makes that issue go away.
Any chance that we can work together with NSTAR to get that road, you know, to perhaps save some money and get that road resurfaced, or not?
Our regulations are pretty clear. If it's anything less than five years old, they actually owe a foul fill and a grind out of the repair and an overlay of that full area.
This is not those that's 10 years old.
I think this is greater than five—in fact, I know it's older than five years old, but not in such highly deteriorated condition that you'd like to go in and rebuild it. I think a real good trench patch, you know, makes sense.
Would be okay?
Yeah. Okay.
Any further discussion?
No.
On favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you. And if you could just get us that—if there was a permit pulled—
Apparently, there wasn't, but I'll be—I'm going to check with our car.
If there wasn't, can we—
We will do one after the fact.
Do one after the fact now?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We're going to skip to item number 20. Item number 20 on the agenda, the approval of signage. Bring up Jay Kennedy.
Aye.
Only because you're here, Jay.
Thank you very much, Phil. Pushing me up, appreciate it.
You didn't want to sit for a whole meeting, huh? Can you introduce yourself, please?
Jay Kennedy. I own 502 Granite Avenue—
Which is Kennedy Sales—
—commercial building, Kennedy Carpet, but it's for sale or lease. It's just not cutting it. So I'm requesting permission to put building available on the sign.
What's on the sign right now?
It just says Kennedy Carpet Sales and Cleaners, and, you know, that type of— you know. But when I got the original sign, it was every time that I want to change the message, I have to come and ask the selectman if I can change the message, because it was a very contentious thing at that time. You know, so basically, I just want to change the message and let people know the building's available, maybe change the color, tone it down to, like, blue and white, and I think it'll look nice, you know.
Same color as everything is present. Can you change the colors on this?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you can?
Yeah. And I think it might be a point to help find somebody to take the building. We have a couple of insurance companies looking at it right now.
I think it's in the best interest of the town to get it rented.
I would tend to agree that, yeah, we should try and—
Get a business in there again?
Yes, absolutely.
Will there be a single message on the sign, Jay? I know before it was rotating.
Yeah, well, it'll change. It'll say, "Building available," and the phone number might say, "Your name here," you know. I think that'd be about it, you know. And I might—like I say, I'm probably going to change it to blue and white, because it'll blend with the colors of the building a little bit better, and it'll actually tone it down a little, too.
So I'll propose a motion to approve the request for Jay Kennedy, President of Kennedy Carpet Sales and Cleaners, to change the message on the LED sign of his building at 502-504 Granite Ave. to advertise his building for sale or lease.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Good luck, Jay.
Great, thank you very much, guys.
Thanks, sir.
Give two more motions. We may as well stand number 20 and—
Sure.
—get the other two approved.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself from the next one. It involves Beth Israel Deacon's Hospital, and I'm on the Board of Beth Israel, so I'll step outside while you act on that one.
Okay.
Okay, I will propose a motion to approve a request from Beth Israel Deacon's Hospital to display three double-sided A-frame signs at the following locations from August 26 through September 23rd: Canton Avenue of Blue Hills Parkway, Reed'sdale Road and Brook Road, and Adam Street and West Squonham Street.
A second—motion made in second. On favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Finally, I will make a motion to approve the request from Rabbi Benjamin of Temple Shalom to display a sign from August 19 through September 15, 2013, in front of the First Congregational Church announcing the Jewish High Holidays.
Second.
Motion made in second. On favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, we'll go back to number six. Item number six on the agenda, which is the approval of the water and sewer rates for FY '14.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to invite Toby Fetter, our water consultant from Woodard and Kern, to join me.
If you could just both introduce yourselves.
Sure. I'm Joe Lynch, Director of Public Works.
My name is Toby Fetter. I'm a professional engineer with the firm Woodard and Kern, and I'm an associate who handles all of the rate setting and most of the financial consulting for the firm.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Joe, can you give us an update on where we are with the water rates?
Certainly.
We know, but let the public know.
Certainly, yeah. Two weeks ago, I appeared before the same board and issued the draft report of what our preliminary rate findings were looking like. Since that time, and even during that time, there's been an ongoing process with the discussion of the town of Canton water issue. What was invited by this board at the last meeting was that Anne-Marie, Fagan, and myself, on behalf of the town—and Mr. Flynn, on behalf of the town, would work with our counterparts in the town of Canton, their town administrator, their Public Works people, and their town council, in trying to orchestrate a new agreement that we might consider. That we've done on both fronts, both the agreement side as well as the physical infrastructure side, and that's resulted in some level of uncertainty on what sort of water might we be selling to Canton. And what it boils down to is, there's a strong likelihood that we're able to return—as a matter of good faith and goodwill—return some of their customers back to them without impacting that hydraulic feed concern that we have to be able to maintain. Green street and green lane ostensibly would become their customers again, and quite frankly, we just don't know what the impact—we don't know for certain what that impact might be on the rates. So we conservatively looked at what sort of billing is attributed to those houses, and we pulled that off of the revenue side, and we've done that in the past two weeks. And then on last Friday, might even have been earlier, but, you know, sometime last week, the final water and sewer recommendation report was issued to you folks, which ostensibly raised the water rate a little bit higher than what we had projected. We asked—in specifically, raising it an additional around 2.4 percent or 2.1 percent, making the net water rate increase strictly for water of 10.75 percent. But at the same time, and again, Canton not being a sewer customer, it had no effect on our earlier projection, which is to reduce the sewer rate by four point—strike that, 2.4 percent. 2.4 percent.
And the net, Canton.
In the net, which is what's—you know, the average homeowner who has water and sewer bill, which is the vast majority of the population in town here—
Except for me.
The vast majority, except for those dubious people who don't, who only have water. I apologize for that, for one not recognizing, and two for the impact.
No, I—
The net effect on the average household in town is a 2.2 percent increase. We were looking two weeks ago at something around 1.5 percent. So it's fractured it up points—0.7 percent.
Joe, in terms of dollars, how much per household, we'd say, any household that's on a Tier 2?
On the average household, you know, a four-person household who's a Tier 2 consumer, not a big yard, not a lot of irrigation, you know, they're a Tier 2 customer. They're around $10 a quarter, $9 and change, a quarter higher is what we're proposing than what they paid last year. So it's $40 a year in round numbers. And actually, between that Tier 2, Tier 3 bandwidth, which really represents a large—good large portion of our customer base—not our volume, but our customer base—it's floating between that, you know, say, $8 a quarter to $12, $12.50 a quarter change per household.
Certainly an onerous increase. Now, just to—just to bring everybody TV land up to the Canton issue, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'll try and explain it, that Canton originally did not have enough pressure to service its customers in the Royal Street area and that park-a-park basic area around there, is my understanding.
You say originally—
Originally, before they—
1953.
Right. So there was this agreement that Milton would supply water to Canton for a particular rate, which was basically the rate that MWA charges, or the predecessor, MWRA, plus a service charge—
10 percent.
—10 percent service charge. And that went on for several years. The agreement was changed about four or five years ago, I guess, maybe a little longer than that.
Eight years ago.
Eight years ago. Time flies. But they still had the same issue. They did not have enough pressure at that point. They have since done additional work on the Canton side, so they do have pressure to supply their houses now. The problem is if they supply all their properties and shut the water flowing in off, they also shut off access to our well—our towers at Chikatobit?
Two tanks at Chikatobit, and our ability to maintain circulation of fresh water to those remote parts of our town.
Right. So even though we were doing Canton a favor, Canton is kind of doing us a favor at the same time by not cutting off the supply, so—
From 1953 until 2006, the symbiotic relationship was pretty cooperative. For 1953 until 2006, the symbiotic relationship was pretty cooperative. We relied on each other, and it really was not adversarial at all. A lot occurred in that time. By us allowing Canton to feed that part of town, it wasn't just pressure, it was pressure in volume of water, so, you know, they worked together. It allowed Canton to allow that portion of their town to grow, especially with the introduction of Route 128 coming in. So, it gave them the growth potential, which is what they were looking to achieve, among other things. In the same token, but to a much lesser extent, our corner of town, Adrian, Silverbrook, Carisbrook, Blue Hill River Road, you know, those roads, nowhere near the development that Canton had, but nonetheless, we invited people to build homes out there. So, that would be otherwise a dead-end part, but since we had a nice looped system, we were able to provide fresh water at the proper quantity, and that went on for decades. And in 2006, there were concerns raised, resulting in the agreement being rewritten, and that's what we've been working on in the past several years, and now Canton is saying, well, we've gotten to the point of growing our system where we would like to take all of our customers back, which we're prepared to do if it didn't negatively affect us. So, what we've asked Canton to do, and it's continued along those discussions in the past two weeks, is to let us consider what we can give back to you, period, without affecting us, and that's the good faith that we've looked at, Green Street and Green Lane, getting back to them, but in the same token, to give us this ample amount of time and protection for us to explore as part of our Water Capital program, which you guys have already approved of, that contract, gives us that six-month time window to really understand, one, do we really need the tanks? And two, what are our alternatives if we do need the tanks? And three, how do we provide the fresh water for those areas?
So, now, the reason it affects the rates is because we don't get billed real-time from MWRA. In other words, we don't get billed as we use the water as it comes into our system. We get billed for water that we previously used on kind of a rolling...
From 18 months ago to the six months ago. Our FY14 assessment, which is what our rates are built on right now, is for water that flowed through the MWRA meter into our system from January 1 of '12 through December 1 of '12. That's water that's gone.
And from MWRA, it's just a fixed charge. It's not a per-unit charge. It's a fixed charge coming out of them, basically.
It's a fixed charge as it's presented as an assessment, but there is a formula...
It does.
Which is built on consumption, is peaking low demands. There's a formula that they use, but in the end...
We're going to get a bill from MWRA.
The assessment is the assessment.
Regardless of how much water we use in FY14, we're going to get the same bill from MWRA. So, if we're selling less water, then our per-unit rate goes up.
Then our rate goes up, exactly. It's a similar conversation that you and selectmen wrestle with every year as we assess our rate payers, but we do it on a per-quartet, per hundred cubic foot, per quartet basis.
Sure.
It's still based on an operating cost divided by a projected number of gallons sold.
Right.
Right. Okay.
So, in essence, you're saying, Tom, the less we use, the more we pay?
Yeah, on a per-unit basis.
On a rate basis.
Yeah.
On a rate basis.
And we have a motion?
Okay, I'll move that we approve the following four tier water and sewer rates for FY14. Cubic feet, 0 to 600 cubic feet, the FY14 water rate, $5.18, and the FY14 sewer rate, $5.86. For Tier Two, 601 to 3,000 cubic feet, water rate, $6.27, sewer rate, $11.06. Cubic feet, 3,001 through 6,000 cubic feet, the FY14 water rate, $6.91, and the FY14 sewer rate, $12.18. And for 6,000-plus cubic feet, Tier Four, water rate, $7.39, and the sewer rate, $12.99.
I'll second the motion. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Just one other, I don't want to beat it to death, Joe. I know you're sitting here in about 88 Warf Street for me, but that's going to be part of the master plan, that we're going to be looking into the issue that they've raised, the equity issue, because it's their...
I was going to hope that the chairman would allow me exactly that latitude to introduce Toby again and to explain exactly that.
Okay.
That looking at our rate structure now, one of the, we're looking at our water capital and water master plan, if you will, from two completely different perspectives. One is the hydraulics and your ability to deliver water at the right volume reliably, and then operationally and financially. And Toby's firm is looking at the operational structure and what you do do and what you ought to be doing, and how it is you do it in meeting the Safe Drinking Water Act. And at the same token, how do you afford this, and how do you look at your structure? They introduced the multi-tier escalating tier rate system about nine years ago?
Yeah, 2007 or 2006, I believe, was the first year.
What we found, and I think you're finding it from your own constituencies out there, we're reaching the breaking point at these rates. The tier structure makes sense from a lot of perspectives, but it doesn't make sense in many perspectives, and the inequities of multi-unit facilities is one of those things. The rate structure is going to be turned upside down and inside out. There are many different ways to skin this cat, and it may not be a four-tier system when we look at it, but what we're going to do is have workshops and understand what sort of tools are available in the toolbox, what might work in this town, what might not, and then those things that might, we might look and present those alternatives at another workshop and get some feedback from the board and others, and ultimately, in about six months, be able to roll out a final recommendation in time for the FY15 budget cycle, so we can bill the budgets accordingly, and then more importantly, to understand that, you know, once December 31 rolls around, we're going to have preliminary assessments from the MWRA. We can then start forecasting what sort of rate structure meets those needs.
So, what's the timing for the workshops and who would be invited to the workshops?
We haven't even had a kickoff meeting yet, but that's what we envision.
But what ideas do you have for it?
What I envision is we've got the hydraulic model, which is actually ongoing, and the operational assessment is sort of ongoing, only because Toby and his firm has worked on our system for so many years, for nine years. He understands some of the deficiencies with our accounting systems and our, I mean, I don't mean for inaccuracy, I mean inefficiencies. Some of the things DOR might raise. There might be better ways to get better reports. So, anyway, we're looking at that. So, I envision that probably timetable, mid-October, we'll be rolling out the first workshops of, you know, at that point, we'll have a whole list of what other towns are doing, what types of things can be considered, and all the way from, let's just do what a per-household flat rate, everybody pays $6,000 a year, thinking up numbers, of course, all the way down to something as sophisticated as multi-tiers, or maybe some forgiveness for just condominiums, you know, those things can all be discussed, and then, once they're discussed, then you can sit down and crunch the numbers. If you do that, this is what your system might look like, and this is what the impact might be to various rate users. And then, based on that analysis and what it looks like, not reconvening the same group in a workshop could say, okay, this is where we want to go, and then pick that one, and they can refine that analysis and make it as part of the final report. So, the goal would be to have that in place mid-December, late December, prior to, just prior to the budget cycle really kicking off in earnest.
So, would these be public meetings, or would these be internal town employees' working group?
I think initially, I think they should be, they should be internal, you know, public work staff, water department staff, accounting staff, town administrator, and a non-quorum of the board, maybe you appoint a subcommittee. But I think as we get into the brass tacks, I think public forum is healthy. And it could even be a rate committee, rate study committee, that we could talk to the chairman about perhaps putting a subcommittee together, that we would get a better cross-section.
Thank you.
Well, keep us informed, Joe, and give Katie informed. What's one of your things?
Sorry, you introduced yourself, you offered a few things, and...
It's okay.
You do good work, the report's for itself.
Any further discussion? We have a motion made and seconded, I believe.
Yep.
On the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you, people.
Thank you very much.
For seven is the approval of a DPW truck and plow.
You may as well stay up here, Joe, have a couple.
Tell us about this DPW after the motion, I guess.
Sure, this is a capital acquisition that was approved under the annual town meeting. I think you have copied my memo, and you probably, what we basically look at is three consortium bids that are out there. Consortium bids are not always the most attractive, but when it comes to rolling stock, particularly smaller rolling stock, like pickup truck grade vehicles, they can be competitive. What we did is we went out and looked at each of the consortiums, and the most competitive of them that fit the need was MHQ, based out of Marlboro. It's an F-350 pickup truck, 10,000 GVW, it's got the utility bodies on the side, set up the plow equipment, flashing lights, two-way radio, all the safety things that you need. So, it's a year-round vehicle, and it's to replace an older one-town truck.
Okay, I'll read the motion, and then I do have some discussion, but I'll propose a motion to approve the recommendation of the Public Works directed to award a contract to MHQ of Marlboro, Mass. for the purchase of a new pickup truck, which includes all snow fighting equipment, emergency lighting, DPW graphics, and a two-way radio in the amount of $43,178, with $41,000 as authorized under Article 8 of the 2013 Annual Town Meeting, and the balance of $2,0178 being paid out of DPW operating budget.
Second.
Okay.
Motion made and seconded.
My question, Joe, is, I mean, I understand, you know, it's, the $41,000 was just an educated, an educated guess in terms of when we put the Article 8 together, but did you check with like a quirk or anybody, just to make sure that...
We did get written quotes, just on a build sheet, on a build sheet for comparable equipment.
Yep.
What we didn't do is take it to the, so we looked at the base truck based on those build quotes, what we didn't do is look at the utility body...
Do early lettering.
In the lettering, the radios, we know what they're worth, and the lighting packages, we know what they're worth, and the snow pole equipment, we didn't include. So, the base truck, the actual base truck delivered, these were more competitive than any of the, you know, off the market.
Than a quirk or...
The reality is, is, you know, when you're ordering with the certain weight requirements that we have in the color, they're made, it's not like you're going and buying it off the...
Yeah.
You know, if you wanted to buy a leftover, you know, maybe a color that's not quite the same as your fleet color, you could probably get a better buy, but to get, you know, a white truck, it's, they're actually ordering it for you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Number eight is the approval of the High Street roadway reconstruction contract.
I'll read this one.
Sure, go ahead.
All right, I'll move to approve the recommendation of the Engineering Department to award a contract in the amount of $296,875 to Allied Paving Corporation of Chelmsford, Massachusetts, for the reconstruction of High Street, which will include the replacement of the failed drainage system along the roadway, as well as reconstruction of the right-of-way, including full-depth pavement restoration, and the installation of concrete sidewalk and granite curbing, and to authorize the town administrator to sign all pertinent paperwork on behalf of the board.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
The only question I have, is this part of the Mass Works grant, or...
It's adjacent to the Mass Works work area, and it's being done in concert with the Mass Works grant.
But not part of it.
But this is not funded as part of Mass Works.
Do you know how much reconstruction of the sewer you're doing?
The sewer has already been done years ago, water was finished up two years ago. This is strictly curbing sidewalks, some pole relocations, installation of a drainage system, roadway service, and tying in the ornamental lights theme coming up from Elliot Street and coming down...
I guess that's what I meant, the drainage system.
The drainage.
How much of that do you have?
All, the entire length of High Street, from the top of Canton Avenue all the way down to Elliot.
Oh, okay. Any further discussion?
I just do want to point out that the pricing, I'm going to say is alarming on the bid. We had a pretty good grouping of five near each other and around each other, and the low bidder was substantially lower. We spent a full three weeks vetting out this contract, checking out references, visiting some of his jobs, just to see what the heck...
His contract.
His contract. And quite frankly, he's just pretty aggressive with his pricing, and he's done good quality work. We actually even, I even sat down with him, with him personally, and asked him, where did you go wrong with your bid? And I was very comfortable, we went through it item by item. So, the good news is because of that, we saved 27 percent below our number-two bid.
And they'll post a performance bond.
Yeah, and they do have to post a performance bond, and he's able to. Similar results in three of the other communities that we talked to, and priorities are comparable size.
They were satisfied.
And they were satisfied, yeah.
Got the job done.
Yeah, we gave him the job. That's what our recommendation is for you to award.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. And finally, for Joe, the Canton water abatement request. Is this changed?
Yes, revised motion.
Do we have a revised one? Joe, can you tell the public what the abatement request is about?
Well, Canton reads their water quarterly, bills their customers quarterly, and collects the money from their customers quarterly.
Again, this is for water up in the Green Street, Blue Hills...
Green, Green Lane, what they call Washington Street, which is still 138, all the way down to where the traffic signals are, down by...
Dunkin' Donuts.
Dunkin' Donuts and the Suffolk Road, and then it turns left all the way down Blue Hill River Road, includes Meditech and a couple houses down in that area, all the way up to Holton's Pond, for lack of a better landmark. That's the Milton line thereabouts.
Does it go right?
It does not go right.
It does not go right.
It does not go right.
Doesn't go down Royal Street?
No, it goes only far south along Green, only as far south as Green Lane, including Green Lane, but no further south. Okay?
So, we supply their water?
We, so we've supplied their water. It's run through our MWRA meter. It's been assessed to us, we've paid all of that. They've billed their customers, and presumably, their customers have paid them. What it really boils right down to, and this, year after year, it's been pretty routine, we issued a bill in July 25th of last year, and they paid it.
And so, the reason we supply the water is they don't have a connection to that part of town?
That's correct. It's the same conversation we had earlier.
Right, so we give them the water, and we bill them once a year?
We bill them quarterly as well.
Quarterly, okay.
They provide us with the readings that they've obtained.
Right.
We calculate what that is on a bill, bill, and issue it to them.
Yep.
So, we bill them in July 25th of '12, they paid it. Bill them again in October, they didn't pay it. We bill them again in January, they didn't pay it. They bill them, we bill them again in April, and they didn't pay it. They came to us informally, they actually didn't come to us. I went to them in early June, saying, hey, look, fiscal year is just about over, you know, what's up with the water bill? And my counterpart in Canton said, look, you know, we've got a problem, you need to talk upstairs. That culminated in them coming to us formally, them meaning as a community through their town administrator, requesting, oh, by the way, we don't want to pay that bill that you've already given us, we want you to renegotiate it and abate it. That's the request that's before you, and what the request specifically is, instead of generating a bill in accordance with the agreement, retail rates, they want us to, as a community through you, to consider abating it to the MWRA wholesale rate, plus only a 10 percent markup, and they want us to do that in arrears for something, you know, if it's, my tone seems that I'm frustrated, seems a bit more than disingenuous that they would come to us...
Right, so they want to renegotiate for water we've already sold them.
Already sold them, and that they've already billed to their customers and collected.
But under an agreement that's already been signed?
Right, but they've collected on that water.
Presumed they have.
Yeah.
Their customers.
Right.
So, that's exactly their request. They're asking us to consider something, you know, in arrears.
And, I mean, as, I guess, as a general rule, we don't grant water or sewer abavements, and this is even, I mean, we've seen some hard cases that, you know, you feel sorry for people, but this was, you know, if they wanted to change the agreement, they could have come to us months and months and months ago, and we might have been able to do something about it, but I'm not inclined at this point to go back on an agreement, so...
Out of fairness to them, I think they've asked two things, but you're only addressing the one tonight, and that's last year.
That's right.
They're also asking us to consider 14 moving forward and anything beyond that moving forward.
And I think that's reasonable for discussion and negotiation, yeah. So, I will make a motion not to approve a request from the Town of Canton for an abatement of its FY13 water bill.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Anything else for me this evening, or should, the agenda's clear.
You can go home.
Reasonably, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Joseph.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the discussion on the harbor master guidelines, and I'd like to bring up Chief Wells.
We also have the harbor master.
And I didn't recognize Mr. Doyle, our new harbor master.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening. How you doing?
My point of historic is that his dad was police chief.
Really?
That's correct.
If you just wouldn't mind introducing yourself to the public.
I'm Richard Doyle. I've lived in Milton for 51 years. I presently live in Quincy. As Chief Wells just stated, my father was the chief of police here. As Chief Wells just stated, my father was the chief of police here, he retired in 79. I have relatives on the police department right now, Kristen Wells, who's a cousin of mine.
Kristen Murphy.
Kristen Clifford.
So you just promoted to sergeant.
That's right, yes.
Yes.
He's a Doyle.
Yes, she's my cousin Peter's daughter. Yes, I have a lot of ties, my mother's side is Ben's, I go back to the Cookie Factory, my grandmother's house is a little white house behind the Cookie Factory, and I've been around a long time. I was Commodore of the Milton Yacht Club for 17 years, I've since passed that on, Rick Dumey is now the Commodore, and John O'Donnell, when he retired as your harbor master, they recommended that I step up to the plate and apply for the position, which I did, and you could go all reviewed, and thank you very much, and I'm here for you people, and whatever I can do to assist you, or answer any questions, I know, I think this is new territory for a lot of you, and
I guess I, if you don't mind, I have two questions. The first one is, because there's been some concern, obviously, we're giving you the use of a boat, in the performance of your duties as harbor master, and that's kind of new to the town, because your predecessor had his own boat that he didn't use, could you just go with us what your qualifications are to operate a boat? I mean, have you had courses in?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
Yes, I've had Coast Guard courses, I've had Coast Guard auxiliary courses, I've owned several boats previously, I've had 31, 32-foot boats.
You passed the Coast Guard auxiliary exam and all that other stuff?
34-foot boat, I've done extensive motor cruising, motorboat handling.
Okay.
I've been pretty much boating all my life.
Good.
Sailing.
But boating on the Napa River would not be a big deal for you?
No, I grew up on the Napa River.
That's good.
I used to walk, I lived on Churchill's Lane, the Napa River was my backyard, I used to walk down through Hutchinson Field and play in the mud when I was a child.
I can remember trying to run across the marsh, and, you know, from the golf course, and, well, used to be Wallaston, you know, running across the marsh, trying to get over to the Quincy side, falling in the mud holes every so often, but. The second question I had, we took it upon ourselves to draw up some general guidelines as to the duties and responsibilities for the harbor master, I don't think we'd ever had any before, some of this we were doing a little bit in a vacuum, and then it occurred to me that, obviously, you're not getting paid as harbor master, it's a volunteer position, and I got a little bit concerned that we may be asking you to do more than what the previous harbor master was doing. I don't know if you've had a chance to read these guidelines?
No, I haven't.
Not, okay.
I have a copy of them, we could, just a copy of them, probably too much to read right now.
But, you know, the more specific ones are maintaining assignments of moorings in the river, ensure that the river channel has markings, keep the Milton boat a salve, and the town administrator advised on any issues pertaining to unregistered boats, excise payments of boat owners, environmental issues, or other issues. Now, that's one, I don't know if your predecessor had that duty of looking for unregistered boats on the river, or, and how much of an imposition, if we ask you to do that, that might be.
That would be more, I would, that's more of a patrol, yeah, that might go beyond what was previously done here by your previous harbor master, and to actually, how would you say that, pursue unregistered, I don't even
Right, he would not have, Richard wouldn't have access to, like, the database, how to run a boat.
Right, exactly.
And from what I've, whether I've not just articulated, written, put in policy, everything I've tried to say is, my guideline here, or my, not my guideline, my goal is to try and assist him and facilitate him in every way that we can. I mean, there are aspects clearly, with his familiarization of, with the river, the channels, the markings, those are things that I have really no interest in.
Right.
But as far as being able to provide for him, or glean from him, information pertaining to boats being registered, insured, excise tax, things of those nature, those are things that we have
How have we been doing that, have we been doing that in the past?
No, and I never even was aware of it until it came to me from the assembler's, the assessor's office, a couple of years ago, that, you know, about the collection of excise taxes, and only the fact that I was a boat owner and pay excise tax to this town myself, was I even aware that most people don't know, that we pay excise tax, and we're required to register our boat in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts every two years.
Mm-hmm, right.
And as I say, there's only, at max, six, I think we counted last year, 56 or 60 boats between both yacht clubs, it's not a, and everything that I've said, and I agree, and I think Richard would agree with me in this, is that at most, this is ancillary at best, there's not a lot, and
Not talking a lot of revenue.
As I say, and as I articulated in my final letter to you today, my overall goal here is, I understand that we obtained this boat through a law enforcement grant, I don't see us using it other than for emergencies or planned events, but to make it available to him to facilitate the issues that you've, like, we're not going to, you know, put markers and things of that nature, and I don't have, but to help him do that, I think we have an obligation as a town to do that, and in that aspect, I think we should do that, I really do, I think that we should make it as easy as him, for him, I mean, he has a zero budget, and
Right.
It's really just not a fair thing, and for us, and I believe, again, I articulated today, why that boat is, even the fact that it's operational today, and not to hash the whole thing out, it's not even minimal cost to us to keep it operational, I mean, we'll take care of his gas, we'll take care of his lines, whatever he needs, those are things we buy for all our vehicles anyway, it's just one more piece of equipment, I'm not, I don't, I don't think, I don't think it's anything that, as you say, Mr. Early, I think to be fair to him, we need to assist him in some way, and I'm more than willing to do that in every way, shape, or form that I can to make that easy for him.
Yeah, I mean, I guess our concern, and I don't mean to speak for the rest of the board, but, maybe I should say, my concern is that with the limited police budget that we have, and, you know, we always need more officers.
No, and I agree with that.
I absolutely agree with that, I don't want to do anything that would take away from regular patrols in any way.
I thought about this today, about, I can only think of four things, the fireworks being one, the body in the river being two, the body this most recent weekend being three, and maybe on the Fourth of July, because that's when they go out the most, just to help facilitate, though they're only four things I can think of in a year.
Yeah, and
We might have, and that's
Two of those are planned events that
Two of those are planned events, and two of those were emergencies, which we've talked about at length, and I think that we're more than, this piece of equipment is more than, when it's taken care of, is more than capable to do that, and more than capable to provide him with whatever he needs, because as I've said, and he hasn't really talked, we've only spoken once, Rich and I, but Lieutenant West has been the one that he's spoken to the most, let him pick where it goes, we've only articulated that we think it should be somewhere close, so that if we have to go out like Saturday and get there quick, we can.
Absolutely, I agree with that, and
That's my only concern, I don't, I, I understand that the situation that you made, mentioned too, like, going out, in an ideal world, that'd be great, but that's just never going to happen here, and I don't see that happening at all.
Yeah, I just echo what Tom said, I mean, my concern is pretty much along the same lines, we have a limited police budget, we could always use more money for the police budget, we'd like to be able to hire more officers, but we don't have the resources. I'd rather see the police even walking the beat, if we could even get
Oh, I agree, yeah.
Something like that, and ticketing in East Milton for parking violations, you know, being available for the different areas of town that are needed, the harbor, we've, like I said at the last meeting, we're not situat, we're not a town
No, I agree.
We don't have a huge need for, this was initially styled as a unit, and I know you explained, you weren't really envisioning multiple people, but I don't think we have a need for
I don't either.
Police officers actively patrolling the waters, or serving in that function, I think we need the police on the streets, and in the cars, and being visible in the community, rather than being on the water, so I think the idea is for the harbor master to really be the one that makes most use
Take care of the boat, right.
Kind of
To continue the way it's pretty much been, it's a very confined area.
Yes.
As Chief Wells said, it basically covers two yacht clubs, it's from the Milton Landing down to the Granite Ab Bridge, it's
And in the event of emergencies or planned events?
Yeah, and the only reason for emergency, like
You have full access to it then.
When we did speak is that, and it's tough in that, unlike Quincy Situate, where they have their boats on a pier, we don't have marina, we have mostly moorings, we have a town landing, so the only thing I said to Richard was that, because the moorings, if you, they go all the way out beyond Bernie Lynch's house, I mean, they go, we don't want to put it that far out to get to an Ahri, so that'll mean, on full moor, as you know, not everyone, you and I know, is the full, big moon tide's going to sit in the mud, but that's okay, we're, I just want to have it accessible so that we can get to it, and the last thing I will say is, for things such as moorings, things of that nature, which you have no budget for, that's money where the port grants are available, and you would be, we would assist him in getting money for that, because those are the, I mean, every dime you can get, regardless of how you can get it, for a community, I think you should
I agree with that.
You should, you should do, so, in that aspect, I think we could, you know, as I said, all the communities around us, regardless of whether they, and Braintree's similar to us, and it's just one river that goes up, it goes, the Four River goes all, or the Back River goes all the way up into Wamuth Landing, they're receiving a lot of money, just for those little areas, and I think we could do that, and as I've said many times, it is getting used more, as you know, there's kayakers, we have two crew teams in town, things like that, so in that aspect, I'm more than willing to help them in that, and as I wrote to you yesterday, my only big concern is, I ask that you allow us to maintain a piece of department property that we'll take responsibility for, but give him the use on, I just, someone has to, I think an agency in town, it was acquired through a law enforcement grant, it runs today because of the police department, I think that, even though it's a minimal budget, you've got to do that, I just, that's my biggest concern in all of this, and as I articulated to you yesterday in writing.
Let me ask the harbor master, Richard, how often did your predecessor, and he had his own boat that he used, but how often was he out in the water as the harbor master? How, how much time was involved in, it's a volunteer position, so
It's a volunteer position.
What was involved in it?
More of it is clerical. The way the Milton Landing and the moorings or anything were, basically, was run through the Milton Yacht Club, and, you know, the harbor master would work through the yacht club, they'd assign mooring spaces to people, they'd set their moorings, he'd maintain who goes where, keep control of who goes where, who stays where, it's more, it's more of that, and, like, for me, right now, as we just said, the more, the, I think Milton's realizing they have a harbor, and things are growing, between the crew teams, the kayakers, it's, this is, this is going to be, we're into a new phase here, and it's going to grow, and what Chief Wells is saying, you know, little by little, this, this might be the first step of something that's going to develop further down, and with government resources and stuff like that, Milton might look down the road and say, geez, maybe we need to dredge, maybe we need to exploit our harbor a little better, it is a, it's a national seaport.
It is, yeah.
It is, and, you know, years ago, ships used to come up that river
Yep.
And unload coal, that was, that was a seaport, and you have it, this is in your community, and that's a rare asset that a lot of communities don't have, and just, but back to the boat, for what I need it for, is more mechanical, to assist with moorings, to, you know, I'm looking at the river, I've been taking a lot of photographs, the river changes constantly, we haven't, we haven't had the river dredged, I don't think, since 1986, and that's a long time ago, and it made a huge improvement, we used to have two mooring lines down the river, we had one on the Boston side, we had one on the Milton side. I have made lots of requests, people want moorings, I can't supply them, we have one string of moorings going down the river, and at low tide, the boats will shift to either, depending on the wind and the currents, they'll either take up the whole river, or they'll stay to one side, because it's not dredge, it's going back to its original, just a natural small channel, and unfortunately, I can't accommodate many more boats, which would be great if we could, even the park department, Terry Driscoll's been asking us, you know, can I help him, I, I have a mooring for myself, for the harbor master, that I discussed with Chief Wells, that when the time comes that I do need to take this boat, or however it happens, that would be where that boat would go, it's right up near the town landing, so if the police department needs it, it'll, it'd be the quickest possible mooring you could get to, and that mooring's not being used right now, so I offered it to Terry Driscoll for them, because, you know, it would, the crew teams, they need to get out, it's hard for them, it's just that much more work, for them to launch a boat every time the kids go on the crew boats, they have to have that chaser, and if they don't have it, you know, they have to, they have to have it, let's put your boat here for now, when we need it, you know, we'll work something out at the time, but it is, it's very tight there, the, if, if you go down there, like Chief Wells just said, on a moon, on a full moon tide, when the tide is out, it's out.
You can walk, you can walk the granite.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's out, but on the same token, when it's full, it's up over the wall, it's, we have a 12-foot tidal range here, that's a lot of water, in and out of that river, and it is, it is what it is, but as I said, for me, the boat would be a huge asset for my mechanical purpose, not so much to patrol the river, it's a very confined area, but I could really use it to assist people with moorings, maybe I can adjust moorings, maybe I can shift some moorings to more configure the channel of the river, to help make room maybe for possible future moorings, so that's where the boat would definitely help me.
I mean, I can see the need for it to be there for emergency situations for the police, certainly, or fire, or both, I can see your need certainly for it, and, and I guess I agree with you that, as time goes on, and, you know, and clearly, we've got the Riverwalk there now, and there's a lot of other, you know, things going on down there that never went on in the past, so it's becoming more active, there's no question about that. I'm still concerned that, you know, on our limited resources, I, I don't feel that we should put any more, in terms of monetary effort into, or personnel effort into the river than we already are at this point, I don't think it matters too much, as, as long as the end result is, the boat's on the river, the boat stays in the river, it's there for emergencies, for the police, in planned events, and it's there for the harbor master, but I don't want, you know, I really wouldn't at this point want to see a lot more happen, if we're not already doing it, I really don't want to spend any money on doing it.
We're not, I don't see that, the only other thing too is, we have garage in the winter, we'll do that again, we have, it fits in the garage in the winter, one of the things is, storage, finding some way to put it in winterize it, is, we have the ability to put it, keep it inside the winter, which will make his life a lot easier, and our life a lot easier, that's the only other, but I don't think you have to, that's never been my intention, and just to what Richard talked about, it is true that, and I just listened to, just only because I happened to be there from a yacht club and Quincy perspective, listened to Quincy talk about the fact that some serious dredging in their section of the city, dredging are things that you're going to want, and he's right, you're going to have to do it eventually, it's going to come to you, and those are things that are federal funds, Army Corps, those are things you're going to want to help to pursue and get money for, so, and that's more of a touch, it's a Bill Clark issue, it's things like that are going to have to take that down, but he's correct, and I, and as again, this, you're never going to have two Richards at the same table whose both fathers were chiefs of police in the town of Milton, this is never going to happen again, but, and it is, it is really a beautiful section of Milton that very few people ever did use, but now more and more people do use.
It's blossoming.
Yeah, it's definitely
The boat is not in the water now, right?
No, no, it's at the police station on the trail, where it's been since, I think the Fifth of July, we just put it in for a day, no, not the, whenever the fireworks, the fireworks, yeah, we took it out after the fireworks.
We want to get it in the water for the rest
We do want to get it in the water, yes, I mean, the voting season's almost, almost over, but, but I think we do want to get in the water, I think we do want Anne Marie maybe to sit down with, with Richard and go over these points to make sure that we finally get a, what do we call it, yeah, the guidelines to
Guidelines, would you like to take that section out that talks about the unregistered boat, excise tax, and environmental issues?
If you want to go through it now, or if you want to just sit down, maybe, I mean, there's enforcement of no wake zones, I don't know if that's something that we
That was just, that was in the original SOP, and we just plagiarized other departments'
Right, right.
SOPs, so
I mean, it probably isn't no wake zone, but I don't know who enforces it.
Well, I'm thinking what we could do is approve, we have, we have the SOP, we also have the July 10th guidelines, the town administrator and the town council drafted, which is not an SOP, it's just guidelines for the harbor master, I think we could act, I'd be prepared to act on the July 10th draft of the guidelines now, I think we could revisit this, as, as you said, this is going to be an area that's developing, there's a lot of change probably happening over the next few years as the harbor, the river gets more active use, I think we could, I'd be prepared to vote on these tonight, if we need to come back and revisit them at a later date.
Do we want to make some changes, though, in terms of, like, taking out those things that aren't being done, or leave them in there and just kind of
We could do it subject to mutual agreement between the harbor master and the town administrator?
The fifth bullet point, is that it? One, two, three, four.
There's a bullet point for no wake zones, and there's another bullet point for
The fifth one.
Or looking for unregistered boats.
We could take some of those out and vote it next week, if we'd rather do that.
Up to you, I mean
We can vote it subject to amendment by taking out the fifth bullet and the second last bullet, the fifth.
If I could just say that I haven't had a chance to review these yet, if I could
Would you rather, that's filed.
Is that okay with you folks?
Why don't we vote it on the 21st?
Fine.
Sure.
Maybe we could get in touch in between then and just go over it. You could explain to me what issues that you just mentioned that you might want to, you're more concerned with and.
Then we'll have, we'll have a clean copy on the 21st.
Right.
I tune it.
Yeah, and you can just get in touch with Anne Marie, we'll get in touch with you and.
And.
I think it would be important, Chief, if we put in there, as Katie mentioned, definitely to revisit it within a year or something. See how, see how our harbor master is doing.
See if anything's changed also.
Yeah.
We're not looking to burden a volunteer position. And we're not looking to expand the duties beyond what the former harbor master did, so.
This would be a trial guideline sheet or whatever, you know, just for a year. Because you are new and we're, a lot of us are new here.
What hasn't happened before is the harbor master hasn't, the harbor master's appointed by this board and technically reports to this board through the town administrator. That really, I, from what I'm told, hasn't really happened where we've had. So we would like the harbor master to have some, you know, not frequent, but some communication with the town administrator during the year if there's problems, if there's issues that we need to think about or address. I think we need to maybe even have you come into a meeting once a year.
Well, that has occurred. The, the previous harbor master had come in.
He did, okay.
At least on one occasion that I was here, just to give a small report. It doesn't, it did occasionally happen. But yeah, it should happen on a regular basis.
Probably twice a year, would you say?
Twice a year.
Once at the end of summer and once at the beginning of the season?
Yeah. Yeah, goals and then how the, how everything worked out, sure.
All right, so we leave that one there. Thank you, Richard. You can stay, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Very nice to meet you all.
Next is the approval of the cadet appointments.
Thanks, Richard.
Chief, can you explain the purpose of cadet appointments before we make the motion?
Do you want me to, you mean the brawl cadets play or?
Yeah, what is their role, yeah.
Okay. So I'll be brief because I know you have a busy night. In Milton, we are one of only three communities in the Commonwealth, the other two being Boston and the city of Cambridge, that by statute are allowed to have a police cadet program. And a police cadet is, is a, usually a college student. You have to be at least 18. You have to leave by your 25th birthday in the city of Boston, 27th birthday. In Milton, the cadet program began in 85. We give a separate police cadet exam. And the cadets take a written and then go through an oral assessment with supervisors. And their role primarily in Milton is they've become 911 operators is what they are. The greatest benefit to our community in the cadet program is that for one third, essentially one out of every three police officers that the town hires, from their cadet program, you can select a cadet who has successfully passed the test and sits on the eligibility list. It's, it's not a preference like a veteran has where they go, it's your preference. It's the preference exercised by the town. In the beginning, the majority of cadets who came onto the police department were through cadet, what we call cadet preference. In later years and in appointments that this board's made and in the past six years I've been chief, I think, I think, you and I, I think I've only asked this board to exercise cadet preference once, even though you've hired five cadets. The point is that the majority of cadets today, they realize how important it is and they just excel that well, that on the regular police exam, we find them always out or near the top of the list. The true benefit for us is that we, and I don't say this in any way because not everyone over there is a cadet. It's about a third of the department right now, maybe even a little more, maybe even a bit closer to a half of the seven lieutenants, six cadets, including Deputy Chief King began as a cadet. It's, it just, it has huge value to us as a community in that it gives us the ability to see the capability of a candidate. And it gives you the pointing authority years later to appoint candidates who you feel have learned that there's a value and they've taken ownership in the community as well as the police department. So these are three individuals who have taken and been at the top of the selection process from the 2013 cadet exam.
Is this a paid position?
Yes, cadets are paid. So cadets, cadets are paid, do they start at 13, Anne Marie? Right around $13, around 12 or $13 an hour. And I think they max out by age 25 at about $15 an hour.
And one of the jobs, I mean, we know this from being in the police station, one of the jobs is being a 911 operator.
That's correct. A cadet is the first person, 99% of the time, if you come on the police station, the person you're going to see is going to be a cadet. They're the face of the police department when you went to 40 Highland Street.
Chief, you said we're one of only three communities that has cadets.
Three in the Commonwealth.
Why, why is that?
Civil service hates it. I, I, that's how. I just go back to the former chief, how many times we went to help try and assist other communities. Civil service doesn't like anything that they view as circumventing the regular civil service test. So it was only for maybe 20 years, Boston and Cambridge, the only reason that we were ever, it was under former town administrator John Cronin, that we were accepted into it was the town had gone through an aggressive affirmative action hiring plan and they wanted, they allowed us to use the cadet exam. One of the things about the cadet exam is if you are a male, you have to be, a white male has to be a resident of Milton to take the cadet test. A minority or a female can be anywhere statewide. And by giving, by the town granting that, that only applies to us, not to Boston and Cambridge. By our town granting that with MCAD and civil service, they gave us the cadet preference law in 1985. So we were added to the statute and that's how, so that's how it happened. Many, I know that I personally, for Chief Murrin, testified for the city of Waltham and one other city, both in their city council chambers and in the state house, and this is going back as long as 15, 18 years ago, both communities trying to achieve and neither one succeeded. So I don't know how many small ones have tried, but those are like larger ones that tried to. So as I say, we are unique in that sense in that it's paid big benefits. And one of the things that we do say to these candidates when they come here is that there's a great deal of responsibility placed upon you when you walk in here. And I, I just, I don't want to cite them by name, but I, I'm going to make mention to one cadet that you just offered a, conditional offer of employment to as a police officer who came to us as a cadet just over two years and a month ago. And Anne Marie, who happened to know this individual, mentioned to me the following day that she was shocked when she saw how much this kid had grown up when he walked in this room and was interviewed by you. She was just, how much he had, but just his experience being in that building and the things that he dealt with for two years, how much that prepared him. I mean, as I say, when I started saying a minute ago, and I don't want to say anything against anyone who wasn't, because I wasn't a cadet. But what we do hire is in the five who are coming now, it will be the cadets who will do a great deal of the nurturing to those who aren't cadets in those first few days, it just, because they have that inside background, that inside knowledge. And that, as I say, is a huge benefit for not just this board, but every board that's sat here, going back to 1985 when that law was passed.
Certainly a great program, great opportunity for these young kids. I will make a motion to approve the recommendation of the police chief to appoint the following candidates to the cadet program contingent upon the approval of the personnel board, a successful medical exam, and completion of the five-week 911 state training academy in Taunton to Jordan P. St. Fort, 38 State Street, Sean McDonough, 91 Emerson Road, and Matthew O'Neil, 36 High Street.
Second.
Motion's made in second, any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Number 12 is the approval of a traffic supervisor appointment.
So I have one request for a replacement traffic supervisor, and you have that request before you?
I'll move that we approve the recommendation of the police chief to appoint Wendy Elder, 165 Blue Hills Parkway, to the position of traffic supervisor contingent upon approval by the personnel board.
A second.
Motion made in second, any comment?
Here's just a question, Chief, and not that I necessarily want to pursue this, but you know I've been asked you several times somewhere, and Katie brought it up again today of trying to do some parking enforcement in. And I had thrown perhaps the cadets and, and I am convinced now that cadets cannot be used because their role is only administrative function, I will go beyond it. Any possibility of perhaps traffic supervisors filling?
I don't know. I will say this to you though, so I'll give you some good news. We are about to go back into school. We've changed the square. And once school starts, you're going to see it upgraded, not just on moving, not just on parking citations, but on moving vehicle citations as we enter the fall season. I mean, last fall, we were really like fighting with one hand behind our back. We're not, not that, in that situation now. So from that perspective, you will see it. We'll probably get a little pushback at some point, but, but I think that you have to do it, and I agree with you. So, and I will send a memo to you when that's going to start, which will be right after Labor Day.
Okay, great. Perfect.
Is that okay?
That's good.
Anything else?
Any further comment?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Have a good night.
You too.
Next on the agenda is. Town meeting articles, the approval of town meeting articles. My understanding, Anne Marie, is that we have 19 articles?
It's getting as long as the annual.
Eighteen. Eighteen articles.
Eighteen?
That is an awful lot for a fall town meeting. Anne Marie and I were talking about that today. It's, and some of these could generate some substantial amount of discussion.
You want to go through each one of them, or do you just want to?
I think a general overview would be good.
A general overview of each one?
I don't think we need an in-depth discussion.
No.
We'll be here all night if we do that, I think.
I think you might want to.
Mr. Sheffield, are you here for a reason?
I believe Mr. Sheffield and Mr. Chan are here for the home rule petition article. But when we get to that, we can bring them up to the table.
Okay, that'd be fine, sure.
Just let us know when we get to that.
The first article is a citizen petition article to form a study committee, town government study committee consisting of seven members, and I believe it was submitted by Steve Morash. The second article is the recommendation, the result of the recommendation of the town government study committee report. And that is to have the town clerk have more of an input in the election process and do more outreach with respect to town meeting and educate the public as to how to become a town meeting member.
Are we going to say more here?
Yeah, yours, yours is in the same order as mine. Do you have a printed copy of this? Yeah, but.
Oh, I'm going by a different one.
The first one is.
Oh, I have a different copy then.
The first one was the general bylaws of the town concerning chapter four, a new section as follows.
Oh, okay.
That's my first one.
Oh, I have this one with the order.
There's another tab that had, if you click on the second tab.
Oh, I see, okay.
I think that's.
So it's the one in the agenda, no? Hang on, hang on.
All right, okay.
Oh, I see, okay.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
So we're back to that one?
Okay.
Just on number two.
Yes.
This is something that came out of the government study committee. The first sentence, and I only bring, we could bring this up again in a sec. We're really just opening and closing the warrant tonight. Is that, that's correct?
No, you're going to vote to include all of these articles in the warrant.
In the warrant, to go to the warrant committee?
To go to the warrant committee.
We could have this discussion at another time, but I just wanted to bring it up tonight. The last sentence, I think the first sentence, that requires the town clerk to do something affirmatively, publicize the notice of the upcoming town meeting and members, number of seats that are available for election. The second sentence, it shall be the specific responsibility of the town clerk to raise awareness of the importance of town meeting membership by working cooperatively with the town's public school system to educate the students of this form of town governance. I don't support the second sentence. I think that's probably beyond the scope of the duties of the town clerk. Obviously, the government study committee, and I was a member of the government study, as was Anne Marie when, when this was voted. You know, you may have different thoughts on that. I don't think that the second sentence is really needed, that we could discuss it tonight at a future meeting, just let it go and let town meeting decide. But that would be my recommendation that we not.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Because this article is submitted by our board.
Right.
So I think we might.
I hear where you're coming from. And I, I agree. It would tend, seem to go beyond the normal responsibilities of a town clerk. On, on the other hand, in this day and age where civics isn't even part of the public school curriculum any longer, and I believe it is, they don't have a civic course anymore when you're in, in school, that most, most kids in, in the public school system don't have a clue as to how town government, state government, or national government works. And it's sad.
I, I agree with that. I, the first sentence requires the town clerk shall publicize. There's something that, it's clear, it's not ambiguous for the town clerk to know. If this bylaw amendment were to pass, the town clerk knows what she has to do. This last sentence, work cooperatively with the school system. It's, it's pretty elusive a standard and it's not, my, that would just be my concern, that it's not really clear what's required of the town clerk there.
Right, right. I mean, it would be nice if the town clerk could take on that role. It's more of an education role in terms of trying to, but I, but I tend to agree with Katie.
And the town clerk and the school department could certainly arrange to.
I think it would be better served if we educated the public. Most people in the town don't have a clue how the town works.
That's true too.
No, that's what I just said. I mean, that, this is an article that's submitted by the selectmen. So the town government study committee has recommended, the question is, do we as a board want to put this article forward with that last sentence or not?
Or just strike that last sentence?
I would vote to take out the last sentence, but another option would be to submit it and let it get debated at town meeting.
I, I would support taking out the last sentence as long as we try and revisit it at some point in time. Maybe not as a, maybe not as a warrant, I mean, as, as an article, but just try and convince our town clerk that it would be a good idea to do something like that and convince the school committee that, or that it would be, you know, maybe it's a, it's just a, you know, a couple of assemblies, you know, or, you know, visiting the various schools and, and just explaining how town government works.
I think it's.
I mean, I think it would be.
I think they all could voluntarily agree to do that, or.
Yeah.
You know, I'm just not sure it should be in a bylaw.
I get your point, Katie. For me, I think that most adults don't even know how town government works. So I think the best way to educate adults is to get them as kids. Before they're adults. You know, you educate them in the school system. Nobody knows what a town administrator does. Nobody knows what the, the town moderator does. I think if we got them in the school system, by the time they're grown up, they may take an interest in becoming town meeting members.
You know, I agree. I, and I think the school department at any time could have a, could have, introduce civics or have a discussion of different levels of government, what the roles are and what, what happens at a town meeting. But I'm just not sure that there should be a requirement in the by, that we as a board should be submitting this with this sentence. We could leave it in, we could let it be debated at town meeting. Town meeting might feel strongly one way or the other on it. I just raise it as something that is a more ambiguous sentence than the first sentence is.
Yeah, and if you, if you leave both of them in, you, you run the risk of losing the whole thing if they decide not to.
I mean, the point you're making is good. I think it should be just debated by the board and see how it goes.
I can go either way on it, so. Super strong one way or the other, but I can certainly see Katie's point.
We could submit it, see what the warrant committee wants to recommend. And we can always recommend a town meeting if we show decide to take it out at that point.
Yeah, okay. All right, that's mine.
Article three, Anne Marie?
We're going to leave it in. Sorry. Article three is to establish and appoint a committee of five persons to be known as the audit committee. This is another article that was, came out of the town government study committee report. Article four.
Just on article three, there's no set term for these, it's a five-member committee. It doesn't say how long they'd be appointed, whether it's all for one-year terms and we reappoint them every year. I'm not sure that we need that level of detail in it, but that might just be something to.
It can be in the recommendation or it can be in the article, I suppose.
Yeah, that might just be something to flag for the warrant committee or for the town council to look into. Chairman?
Article four was submitted by the town treasurer, and it is, he's looking for a stipend for $1,000 for completing courses in relation to his role as the town treasurer collector.
I think he has words missing in the first line, but that's something that, this will be submitted to town council anyway to review.
Yes.
Article five?
Article five is submitted by the board of selectmen. It's to see if the town will vote to transfer park from the board of park commissioners to the board of selectmen, the care, custody, and control of land shown on the assessor's map. And it's the land up, up, land up off the access road, as you go up the access road onto the left-hand side.
Is that because the parks have no further...
That is so that...
It would only be for potential solar park.
Oh, that's right, okay. Yes, okay.
Article six is at the request of the traffic commission. They're looking to establish a revolving fund from the fees that they collect for the hardship permits. And that would be to fund the line painting and the street signs. It's becoming a very costly item for the DPW to absorb that expense.
Where does that money go now?
The money that's brought in, just into the general revenue.
General revenue.
Yeah, general fund. And that's also submitted by the board of selectmen. Article seven is submitted by the board of selectmen at the request of the building commissioner. And this has to do with the fines that are assessed due to zoning violations. And right now, the zoning violation for an unregistered vehicle or a commercial vehicle is fifty dollars. What this article will do will make it, extend it to a compounding effect of however long the violation stays in place, it would be fifty dollars per day. For other violations of three hundred dollars, which is for debris, illegal three families, buildings too close to property lines, again, for however long the violation stays in place, the fine would accumulate.
And just like the water bill, if you don't pay it...
It's lienable.
Then it's lienable.
Well, that would be your next article eight. And that's what article eight does. It allows you to then lien the unpaid fines.
Yep.
Article nine, again, is at the request, this was worked on by the building commissioner and the town planner at my request and at your request to eliminate the signs under, from under your purview back to the building commissioner and the sign review committee.
I think we just need to make sure that the town council looks at this one. And I always, I know he will look at all of them, but there's...
Yes.
At the top, we could B three, B add. We just don't have the right wording on some of them.
Yeah. I do have a question. I mean, it's kind of related to this, but do, do we have a zoning on political signs in terms of the size of political signs, or no?
Not at this time.
There's one on Blue Hill Ave. that's literally a billboard. And it's not, it's a Boston politician, it's not even a Milton politician.
I saw that.
It's, it's a billboard.
You know what one you're talking about? Yes?
The new language actually did go through town council, and the new language specifically stays away from political signs.
Yeah, I know, because there's a freedom of speech thing there, so it's...
Right. And this was written, taking into account all the freedom of speech and the different court cases that are out there.
Article ten?
Article ten is a planning board article. Bill, do you want to speak tonight?
Bed and breakfast, I think is a great idea.
It is a wonderful idea.
When the planning board took up the master plan process the first time, they put out a questionnaire. The number one issue that people wrote back, if you could have something, what would you have? The number one thing came back was a bed and breakfast. This is that first attempt at putting in some type of zoning for bed and breakfast. There's still discussion going on at the planning board, but that's what it is. It's for bed and breakfast. If you go to article eleven, it's to be able to charge a room tax if the B and B goes through. So, we tried to cover both bases.
Bill, will the planning board have final votes on these before the warrant goes to press?
Yes.
Okay.
They expect to discuss them August twenty-second.
Article eleven, Bill? With another planning board?
Article eleven goes with B and B, that's the room tax. Article twelve is a housekeeping. It actually, in chapter eight, there is a, it says building inspector, it says building commissioner. It has...
Inspector of buildings.
Right, so we tried to be the same and be consistent. The other is under special permits. The planning board can issue special permits, too, so it's adding planning board in there. There was a typo in section eight B, so it's changing applicants to applications. And I don't know how it missed it when it got voted, but everything I've seen on the vote was, it said applicants. That's it.
Article thirteen?
Thirteen is a, it's again a housekeeping item. It's removing the related production. This has to do with scientific study, which is allowed at your house. But it removes the part about related production from that scientific production.
Fourteen?
Housekeeping, it changes the title of chapter nine from Board of Appeals to Special Permits or Other Permits. Because our Board of Appeals has special legislation that came in in nineteen seventy-eight, in the Acts of nineteen seventy-eight, we need to go to town meeting to make a change to the title when we talk about Board of Appeals, because it is a substantive change. Again, it came from town council that, yes, you need town meeting. It was the belief of the planning board that you might just be able to change the title, but because it's substantive because of the Acts of nineteen seventy-eight, it needs town meeting approval.
Fifteen?
Article fifteen, again, is another Board of Selectmen article, and it's another recommendation that came out of the town government study committee report. And it's to amend chapter forty-one, section eighty-one of the general bylaws. And it's to add an alternate member to the planning board. In the event that a planning board member is absent, then this alternate member would be able to...
That would be an appointed member, right.
Well, and that's the issue in this one, and I did the research on this when I was on the government study committee. The government study committee recommended an appointed alternate member. The planning board, as Bill can probably speak to this, prefers that if there be an alternate member, that it be elected. So, that's the question, I think, do we want to submit the article using, recommending that town meeting consider an appointed alternate member? The main point for the government study committee was that there be an alternate member to help with some of the public hearings on these special permit applications, to make sure there's always a forum, make sure that the hearings don't go on forever being continued, but can be acted on quicker. The question is, do we want to submit this knowing that the planning board will probably oppose it and ask that it at least be elected? And then I think we have a question of, is there any, do we have a scope question? We, we probably should run that by John Flynn and see whether, you know, if this is recommending an alternate member, if the planning board gets up and says, we prefer an elected and...
Is that outside the scope of the article?
Yes, so I think we want to at least run that question by town council.
I'm not sure who would run for, run a campaign to be an alternate member.
I, well, that, that's the fear, and that, you know, if it does get voted in and nobody runs, then what do you do?
Whereas if you appoint somebody, you can appoint some qualified person, you know?
You know, if only one person...
Yeah, that's one of the reasons the government study recommended an appointed...
The appointment, yes.
So...
I mean, I suppose we could have this rewritten such that the language of the article would allow either, you know, to see if the town will vote an alternate member and to see how such member would be, would take off as either by election or appointment or something to that effect. And then, then the recommendation would have to...
Yes, because the recommendation could address alternate or elected. Would, I guess that's the question. This will be going to the warrant committee, but Emery, you said that we'll have these reviewed by town councils. We may be able to, be able to make some changes before a final vote is taken by the warrant committee.
We're not actually closing this tonight, right?
The warrant is closed. It was closed on August eighth.
I mean, yeah, we're approving these tonight.
You're approving these for submission into your warrant.
Right. So, do you want to make a determination if we should, we should recommend appointed or elected?
You can, I think what Tom is saying, we could, we could submit an article stating to see if the town will vote to amend chapter forty-one, section eighty-one A of the general bylaws of the town of Milton by providing for the appointment or election of an alternate member. And then that way...
And leave it up to the recommendation.
Then, yeah, then the warrant committee could, presumably, they'll want to meet with...
All right, done.
Meet with the planning board and with Bill.
And Emery?
Yeah, right, they'll meet with the selectmen, they'll meet with the planning board, and there'll be three different recommendations sitting out there, and it's up to them to choose which one they want.
Okay. Good. And town meeting could override it if they found it to.
It could, yeah.
It has been known to happen.
It has, yeah, occasionally.
Number sixteen?
We could leave it as it is and just let the warrant committee decide in their recommendation. So, we have a couple of different options.
I personally like to, let's make the article more general so that...
Okay.
Allow the recommendation to carry.
Go either way, so it's within the scope?
Yeah.
Okay.
And number sixteen?
Article sixteen is to amend article twenty-three of the two thousand thirteen annual town meeting, which was the public works article. And this is in relation to what you just voted earlier this evening, your water and sewer rates. In the original article, you had a zero amount coming out of your water surplus and zero coming out of your sewer surplus. Now, you have changed that to take a hundred thousand out of your water and three hundred thousand out of your sewer surplus. So, we have to amend that article to reflect that change.
And that's the reason we can keep the increase at two and a half percent?
Article seventeen was at the recommendation of Tony Tocello, who's on the school building committee. He had asked that the committee has pretty much finished its, its charge, and so he'd like to have that committee disbanded.
Number eighteen?
And article eighteen is a planning board article?
No. Article eighteen is the, Mr. Chan's article.
No, article eighteen is yours. It's the special permits or other permits?
But that was...
Article nineteen is Mr. Chan's.
So, there is nineteen?
There is. You have to go back into your, you have to go back into your agenda, and it's article seventeen and your agenda articles.
Oh, it is, okay. Okay. Next time, why don't you make it confusing on us?
Fourteen is eighteen.
Right, that's your last one.
No, they're the same article.
Oh, you duplicated it?
Fourteen and eighteen are the same thing.
All righty.
I'm just trying to make the warrant longer.
Yeah, you're just trying to keep them awake over here. Can I have that back? So, you duplicated them.
Where's Mr. Chan's?
They are different, they're, they're different on this...
Number seventeen?
Number seventeen.
I'll get the, I'll get the correct language to call it first thing in the morning. It came from, it came from town council.
Are we pulling one of them, Bill?
No, we're pulling eighteen, and it's going into fourteen. It's fourteen, same. Bill, before we, before we move on to Mr. Chan's, in terms of articles, have, what progress have we made on medical marijuana at this point in terms of, have we made any in terms of coming back to town meeting? Were they... And the only reason I mention that is in light of something...
A letter that I sent you today? I know that Mike Blanchard, Emily Ennis, Emery, and I believe Richard was here. The five of us met, we went through, we planned to meet again. Emily asked if we could meet next week. We're still plotting out that day if we can get five people here.
All right, but we're making progress in any event.
Baby steps.
Yes.
Baby steps, but we are working towards it.
As long as baby steps are forward, that's good.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Bill.
Coming back, so I'll wait.
And then article seventeen in the original agenda, which is now the nineteenth article?
Yes.
Although we're combining two planning board articles, we might be back to eighteen.
So, we're back to eighteen.
Goes back to eighteen, okay.
Good evening, I'm Lieutenant Bob Sheffield.
Hey, Bob.
With me is Walter Chan, who for the past sixteen years has been the owner of Mr. Chan's restaurant in East Milton Square. Milton, as you know, has become a destination site for, for food and dining over the past few years. And Mr. Chan has an opportunity with the closing of La Marage hairdressers to expand his restaurant. And he wants to expand the restaurant to provide for in-house dining. And he will expand it to permit a capacity of sixty-eight patrons. And in this regard, he's already gone to the Board of Appeals, and they have approved his proposal for a change in use. He's going to the planning board, and they unanimously voted to grant site plan approval. And now we are asking the selectmen to put in an article for a license for the sale of alcohol.
Would it be a full license?
It would be a full license.
With the intention of selling both beer, wine, and...
That's correct. And he plans to have no bar in the facility, and the sale would only be to patrons. But in order to have a fine Chinese restaurant, you have to really be able to offer some...
It makes sense, yeah.
Yes.
You have, you have a license right now, some sort of a license right now? Saki or something?
Well, that's the...
That was sushi, Rashma. Yeah, I no longer...
So, you don't have any license right now?
No. Oh, I, I do have a B and Y license, and not establishment, but not in Milton.
Not in Milton, okay.
Right.
Now, what, what is it?
One individual can own three liquor licenses, and that's...
Up to three.
And that's statewide, that's not town by town?
That's correct.
Okay, so, so then we're only talking two licenses?
Yes, there'd be no problem with that, we got it.
And has parking been addressed?
I mean, yes, parking has been addressed by the Board of Appeals.
Okay.
And basically, this is the expansion of a space that was used by a hairdresser. And a hairdresser during the daytime has much more intensive parking demands than a restaurant that is primarily evening. So, that, for that reason, it would seem to mean that this change would decrease parking problems in East Milton Square rather than make them worse.
Okay.
Also, Mr. Chan has arranged, and sovereign bank has graciously agreed, that after the bank is closed, people would be able to park in the rest, in the bank's parking lot that are patrons of Mr. Chan's.
And you'd also do a lunchtime business as well?
Well, I've been there sixteen years, and my experience...
You already have a lunchtime business as...
Yeah, but it's, it's very, very slim, I know, yeah. You know, it's, I would say it's probably like five percent of my business, and I'm...
Yeah, yeah. Right, because East Milton, typically, you're not going to get people coming from...
Yeah, I guess there's a stigma about, you know, patrons or who want to dine at that parking will be tough. So, you know, I don't think they really make an attempt during lunchtime to come in.
Okay.
I could be wrong in this, but is there a certain number of licenses that the town can approve?
No, we have a kind of a unique situation, so far as Milton is a dry town. So, that any increase in the number of licenses has to be petitioned as a home rule petition to the Great General Court, and it has to be approved by the House, the Senate, and signed by the governor. That's on an individual basis. Traditionally, all the licenses except one has been site-specific. And all those in the last ten years have been site-specific, which means that if another restaurant were to, for example, open, you cannot transfer a license, an existing license, to that restaurant. Also, if the restaurant were being bought by somebody else or turned into a chain or something or other, the license would not go with it.
You have to start again?
You have to start the process again. The only exception to that is when the Milton Hill House obtained the license, we put it for any food-serving facility which is attached to a residential use.
So, that's how that wound up at Full Village?
That's how it wound up at Full Village, because that happened at the time to be the only facility in town which qualified. And at that time, it was not... only facility in town which qualified, and at that time, it was not site-specific, but it was the restaurant connection with an apartment building.
But under Section, is Section thirty-eight still liquor?
It is Section thirty-eight.
Chapter thirty-eight, I mean?
Yeah.
And that, that does, based upon population, set the number of liquor?
Yeah, I thought there was some limitation.
There's a minimum amount, which is fourteen, fifteen, yeah.
Yeah, and if we adopted the, yes, and if we, we adopted a different type of statute, then we could, it would be up to the Selectmen rather than the Great General Court.
Right, we have a looking board, basically.
The, the other thing is, once this is approved by the, the state, then, of course, it comes back to the Board of Selectmen to decide whether the license should be issued and under what conditions, et cetera.
I just thought, I remember hearing at Town Meeting a few years ago that there was a maximum number that we could go through this process for the home loan petition, I thought, but I could, like I said, I could be misremembering it, I just thought there was some number that was our, that was the maximum that we could issue in Milton.
I think you are thinking about the Chairman Law, yeah, but Bob is correct.
Okay, well, we have a motion. That's the end of the articles, right?
Yes, that's the end of the articles, Mr. Chan.
We have the motion on a separate sheet.
Well, first of all, I'd just like to, with respect to Mr. Chan, you know, glad to see your restaurant thriving so well, and always looking forward to seeing, you know, commerce expanding in the town, so, you know, fully, personally support it, so.
Thank you.
Hopefully, hopefully the town will as well.
I do think eighteen articles is an awful lot for a fall Town Meeting, although some of, you know, discharging the School Building Committee, that should be a very short article, but some of these will generate some discussion, and we could be there a couple of nights. Hopefully not, but I think this is more than what people would have envisioned.
If you say we will, we will.
I'm not saying we will, I'm saying we could be.
Well, as, as long as there's eighteen fewer articles in May, we have-
Yeah, well, there may not be.
So, otherwise, do we have a motion to?
You go, Tom.
I propose a motion to approve Articles number one through, shall we say, eighteen?
Eighteen.
For inclusion in the two thousand thirteen October Town Meeting warrant.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's you now.
Have these articles already been provided to the Warren Committee, at least in draft form?
No, they will vote to them tomorrow.
When is, what are the dates that we're looking at for warrant going to the press? Or ballpark?
I think it's, I think it's September twentieth. I think it's, the first one is the end of September to the printer.
Okay, right, that gives them about six weeks. So, eighteen articles is, is a lot for a Warren Committee that's, they've got new members, they were just appointed in July, they're looking at a budget right now, already they're starting to talk budget, so eighteen articles is a lot. I just want to make sure that we get this to them tomorrow, and they're, okay. Tom and I can relate to this, Dennis, you know, having, having-
They're going to get them, and they're going to say, "You want us to do what?"
Exactly, and-
Meet how many times?
It's, it's eighteen articles for the fall is a lot, so we just want to make sure we give them as much support as they need on this, and make ourselves available as needed to go and address the ones that we're submitting.
We will, we'll be available.
Katie, that's September twentieth goes to the printer.
Goes to the printer, okay.
Number fourteen, the approval of the Ullin Ring Capital Oversight Committee appointment. Mr. Clark?
I'll read the motion in first, but to move to establish a Ullin Ring Capital Oversight Committee to review and authorize capital replacement plan for implementation, set committee to be comprised of the following: one park commissioner, one member of the Board of Selectmen, town administrator, consolidated facilities director, the town treasurer, and the town planner.
I'll second the motion, I think this is a good idea to-
Motion is being made and seconded for discussion?
Well, it sounds, from what the Town Administrator told me in the presentation we had by someone at Citizen Speak at the last meeting, I think, this is something that was in the RFP initially and has never been formed, but-
Right.
But would be a good idea to have a committee in place to do some oversight.
Yeah, I mean, as it stands right now, all we'd be looking at is a twenty or so thousand dollar capital budget. The balance of the capital's already been done, it was done specifically, I think, in the proposal by Curry as, as ring management, wasn't detailed out as a budget in that, but certainly, we should make sure that we comply with the proposal that we submitted to the state, so.
And that's what we're doing, dotting the I, crossing the T, and having our people review what has already been done and what's going to be done-
Right.
-before we hand either get the long-term lease or give it back.
Absolutely. I have no further questions.
I don't either.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's you now. Number fifteen is a discussion on the Hendry's property update, and I think, Tom, you started these meetings-
I did.
-at the beginning, and I took over in, in May, and we've been meeting on Sunday mornings specifically for the last, we met twice in the last couple of months. Senator Joyce was instrumental in putting everybody back at the table again, because, as you know, the, after the no vote came at the Planning Board, it kind of all fell apart. Cheryl Taggias has, she had agreed to step up and be the architect pro bono, she's, she's doing everything for, for no money, and she's showing up at every meeting, she's showing up at site meetings down at the Hendry's building. We've been meeting here on Sunday mornings, the Connollys are back on board. At those meetings is Chairman Whiteside from the, Alex Whiteside from the Planning Board, Brian Joyce is here, myself, Anne Marie. Bill, you, you've been to one?
Two.
Two?
Three. The first three.
Okay, and, and the Connollys. Steve was here one Sunday, and Jerry was here the next Sunday. And everybody seems to be agreeable that the project should move forward. The problem is, when is it going to move forward? And what kind of a building is it going to be there? And is it going to meet the zoning? So Cheryl came on board, and she, she designed basically a new building again, and she pushed it back at the request of the, oh, the other guy that was there was Peter-
Peter Mullen.
Peter Mullen. At the request of the neighbors down in the Elliott Street District, they wanted the building pushed back at least ten feet from the corner to create more of a public amenity.
So, it's pushed back off a central ave, ten feet?
Correct, ten feet, and so there's a big public amenity proposed right now on the corner, where people can come over and eat their lunch there. There's going to be a number of parking spaces at the back of the building that's being proposed for the public to use during the day. There'll be a time on, a time limit on the amount of, you know, the amount of time you can spend in those parking spaces. And last week, we had a landscape architect come out, Jerry Connolly's landscape architect. There was an issue over, was there enough green space? And, and the fencing, and we met at the property, and they all seemed to come up with a design that was agreeable to the developers, to Mr. Whiteside, and to Cheryl Taggias, who was actually going to draw it up again, helping out the landscape architect. And that's where we are. They're ready to, pending the RFP for the town-owned property. What most people forget is that there's two owners of that property, one is the Connollys, and the second is the Board of Selectmen, the Town of Milton. And so, we're going to put the property out for an RFP, hopefully if we approve it tonight, and the Connollys are going to bid on it. And if they're the successful bidder, then the plans that have been drawn up over the last number of months will fall into place. They will then submit their application to the Planning Board again, and it becomes a public process.
So, it'll be a new application?
It will.
Okay, okay. I think that was, that was some concern, whether it was going to be a new application or just a reopening of the old application, so it'll be a completely new set of public hearings?
That's vague at the moment, to be quite truthful.
Okay.
That's vague.
Okay.
Okay. But there was some concern with some neighbors that there was a lot of backroom deals going on. There's actually no backroom deals going on, it has to be a public process. It's just that we wanted to get something together that the neighbors voiced concern about previously, and now they're addressed. Nobody's going to be satisfied one hundred percent, ever. I'm in this business, I do it for a living. You know, you can have ten neighbors, and you'll have ten different inputs, and you'll address five, and you can't address the other five. That's just the way it is, you know, but sooner or later, it's, sooner than later, hopefully, it's going to go in front of the Planning Board. The neighbors will voice their concerns, there'll be a couple of more meetings, hopefully, to address the concerns, and then it's up to the elected body to make a decision and go for it, either reject it or go for it.
Two questions, Mr. Chairman. One is, what's the status on the forty-B application that they filed, and maybe Bill can speak to that, or?
That's on hold. It's presently on hold pending this application. If this application does not go the way that the Connollys want it to go, and it seems to be going the way they want it to go, then they're going to file for a forty-B.
So, he never did submit the forty-B application?
Won't know that, Bill, do you know that?
I thought it was, Bill.
We were told to, yeah, but-
They, they submitted an application, but it's incomplete, so it's not a complete application, it's still missing components before Mass Housing Partnership can, can rule on the, the site plan for that, the site application for that forty-B, they need two or three, two or three more pieces.
Okay, so that's why it's on hold, and?
Yes.
Okay.
And then what about the, you know, the so-called mystery owner that people refer to, there's a piece of this parcel where there's some question of title?
There is, and, you know, I actually had the same thing happen on a building that I own in Napansett Circle. When we did a, when I went to the Boston Zoning Board of Appeals, it was determined that there was, and I guess it's a legal term, a Schreiber's error or something, or Schreiber's error?
Schreiber's error, yeah.
And it was corrected. That may be the, the problem here as well, there may have been an error when it was, back in, when it was, when the deed was transferred back to the Town of Milton.
Nineteen twenty-six, but, no, because they, in nineteen twenty-six, when the then MBTA, Mass Transit Authority, got that land, their deed actually shows the same piece of land as unknown. And if you go back and you chase it further, you can go back to eighteen ninety-six, and they said they, it was an unknown owner at that point. And that's where you gave John Flynn permission to go and hire a, a deed researcher to go and get this, and supposedly, they're just about done or done with their, with their search, but John's on vacation, and we can't get to the data till he gets back.
So, we don't know if you found an owner, or don't know?
We, we asked, we haven't been given an answer yet because John's not there.
Okay, so we should have an answer on that question soon. What communication has there been with the neighbors? You mentioned Peter Mullen.
Peter Mullen has been, from what I can gather, and this is, obviously, we're in a public meeting, but I understand that he's representing the neighborhood at these meetings.
But there are some neighborhood meetings planned, though, too, aren't there?
There will be neighborhood meetings at the beginning of September.
This is the Columbine Cliffs Neighborhood Association?
Yes.
Okay.
And Cheryl Taggias has agreed to present the plans, along with Jerry Connolly's lawyer, to the neighborhood. These new plans and landscape architects, and they'll all be there, and they'll, I'm, my understanding is that there'll be two meetings with the neighborhood before the application gets submitted.
I have not seen the plans, I don't know, Tom, whether you have?
I've glanced at them, I haven't looked at them in detail to speak.
It's going to be thirty-eight units, that's what's being proposed, and three affordable. And then they have enough spaces for all the cars and more, including the public amenity. The big question was, what is the public amenity they're giving back to the town? And it's the parking, it's a lot more green space, it's allowing people to go over there and have their lunch, and sit on nice, you know, benches, and, and at the same time, I believe, Anne Marie, that the money has come through, and Tom, you might know this, for the pocket park that Senator Joyce was talking about-
DCR is actually going to do that.
-going to be incorporated into the, the walking path, the bicycle path behind the building.
So, are these plans, Anne Marie, that you've been, if not, I'm happy to come into the office and look at them, but I wasn't aware that we had draft plans yet.
We don't have-
No, we don't have any real-
Yeah, but even conceptual, I'd like to take a look at them.
And that's where we are. So, once we approve the RFP tonight, it'll go out, and I guess it has to sit there for thirty days?
Yes.
I know we don't have any control over the situation, but I, I would certainly, I would hope that the Planning Board decides to make it a new application, just to make sure that it is properly vetted. That would be my desire, but again, it's the Planning Board, it's not the Board of Selectmen, certainly, they don't control that.
Yeah, that's a good question, I didn't, I wasn't sure if it's going to be a new application or an extension of the old one.
I, I don't know that you can extend something you've already denied.
I, I wouldn't think so either.
Denied in public, you denied, you have passed the, the appeal period, so it's-
I would think it would have to be a new application.
I do, too.
With new public hearings.
I mean, I, that's the only way I could look at it with a straight face and say that it's, it's the appropriate way to do it.
I agree.
It's, it's, you're saying it's appropriate to have a brand-new application?
It has to be a brand-new, you've already-
Well, I mean, the-
Steve asked for a decision from the Planning Board. The Planning Board told him, "Don't ask for it," he's wanted it, they took their vote, they denied the permit. By denying the permit, and then the appeal period ran out, the permit became final. So, you can't go back and change it after the fact, you're, you're waiting for a new application. In order to wait for a new application, there is a cooling-off period where you have X amount of time before you can come back with a new project or that project, unless the board wants to take on a new application. And that's the case here-
Right.
-is that the board will take a new application because they feel that this is a benefit to this particular area. So, they're waiving the, the cooling-off period and going right for the new application.
Right. I believe that's, yeah, that is waiving.
That's what they're doing, they, they have to come in with a new application.
Yeah, okay, that's good, I'm, that's fine, thanks.
How long is the cooling-off period?
I'm sorry, it's either, it's either one or two years, and I'm going to guess it wrong if I say whichever.
The Planning Board has indicated that they would wait-
They, the Planning Board will, if the application comes in now, they'll, they'll accept a new application. And can I just add an editorial to what you said? These meetings are not secret meetings. The intent is to find a way to get the Connollys back before the Planning Board for a successful special permit. What it's doing, it's trying to work out with the neighborhood associations, people who have dealings in this type of industry, and craft a project that is going to get approved this time. We're looking for a way to fast-track a lot of these things, not fast-track in the sense of pushing them through the board and having the board just say, "Okay," it's making sure they address the issues before it gets to the Planning Board, so that when the application comes in, it isn't a two-year process like the last time, that they can finish and approve the project in a much quicker timeframe, because they've worked out all those issues that should have been worked out before the application came in.
I think if the neighborhood concerns were addressed, which I believe they were, but no doubt, since I am in this business, you're not addressing everybody's concerns, there's going to be some tweaks, and we understand that. It's imperative that these buildings come down before the winter, that's the goal here.
Are there more meetings scheduled, are you meeting every Sunday?
No, we're not, there's no more meeting schedule now. There's going to be neighborhood meetings scheduled at the beginning of September with Cheryl Taggias and Jerry Connolly's lawyer, presenting the plans to the neighborhood, then they'll apply for the, for the permit, or to the Planning Board.
So Cheryl is working with the Connollys. They have, she's, you said she's doing it pro bono, but-
She's, yeah, she's working with the Connollys, and she's working with the neighbors, and she's, she's trying to, she's trying to construct- She's, yeah, she's working with the Connollys and she's working with the neighbors and she's, she's trying to, she's trying to construct and design a building that everybody will, bearing in mind that nobody will, not everybody will be happy, but most people should be. She's done a wonderful job and she deserves a lot of credit.
Yeah, absolutely.
As does Senator Joyce. He's, he's brought everybody back to the table again, just when it all fell apart. And it's great to see the Connollys cooperating there. They're, they're actually delightful to work with, you know? Once they, once they like what you're designing, you know?
So the bottom line, I guess the takeaway is that there will be neighborhood meetings scheduled coming up with the neighborhood association, with people...
At least two.
Business people and residents in the area.
It'll be, it'll be a public process.
Before it becomes a special permit application.
Yes.
And then there will obviously be public hearings.
Yeah, at that stage, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for that update.
You're welcome. Number 16, discussion, the RFP, RFP for the sale of the town-owned land on Central Avenue. And again, this is just the property that the town of Milton owns that it joins the, the Hendry's Building down on Elliott Street. We're looking, we're looking to sell this property. It's going to go on the central register for 30 days. People are going to bid on it, hopefully, more than one, and we take the highest bid.
Now, the materials had an invitation for bids, and I know I just...
That's the legal ad.
It's the legal ad.
Yep.
I just picked up the RFP. So I, I think in the legal ad, section three, we, it says, must be, existing structure must be demolished within 60 days of the RE transaction closing, which I assume is a real estate transaction closing. I'm wondering if we should say 60 days of the sale, just because that's not defined anywhere.
I've actually been asked a couple of times, and because of the dates that we have here, we have to have this thing in the central register by the 28th, so we have time. You haven't had time to be able to go through the entire document.
No.
What you've got was the invitation for bid that has to be published in the newspaper.
Yep.
The other document and the draft purchase and sale agreement are the things that will be handed out when somebody comes in to, to bid on the project. We tell them that the, that this is available, and that will, that will be addressed to say that this is here at the Selectman's office.
Yeah, my only question was, when you, you talk about the, you know, if you use that as a defined term earlier, it would be clear to somebody, just so that it's clear that, because this is an important point, demolish within 60 days of the sale. I'm just, is that really what you're...
I also had a question about that because I have been asked, well, what if it isn't the Connollys that bids on it? Can somebody else bid on it?
We actually spoke about that tonight.
And...
And that's a good point.
There is a way to make it that you could do that. And it's to change two to two A, three to two B, change four to three. Don't read that one, read that one.
Katie, for instance, if somebody came in and wanted to, and bid 500,000 on the, on the town-owned portion, we'd almost have to take it. But what if they wanted to fix up the existing building that the town owns into a small office building and put parking underneath?
Right.
According to this, they're forced to take it down within 60 days.
That's why...
Yeah.
I think it's unfair.
Right, and that's why I took and made the change, taking two to two A, three to two B. Number four, three, which would then allow somebody else to come in and buy that property, but not have to take the building down. The only way to take it down is if you're combining them.
So Bill, I think then you want to move the A. So you want to say, should the parcel be combined with the abutting parcels? A, the combined site must be developed.
Yep.
And that, so I would move the A, and make this A. I would take the A out of here, and two, and then A and B, similar to what you did. The only, my initial point, though, was, do you want, should RE transaction closing be sale? So that it's clear to somebody?
Yes.
Okay, then that was, then that's the only comment that I had in the invitation, that you might want to make that...
Yes.
Change, so that someone, so that there's no confusion. So that somebody reading that in the newspaper understands it's within 60 days of sale if they're...
No, it is transaction closing.
It's only an obligation to the Connollys, but...
It said transaction closing.
Yeah, I would either take out RE or just change the whole thing to the sale, to the sale of the property. Or I, it's just, the way it's currently worded, it's just not entirely clear to somebody reading it. Somebody like me who's, you know...
Came from town council.
So this is, this is limited, though, by, by the...
Or it's a real estate rather than RE, if that's another option.
They wrote this one, I didn't. I did, but they had already done it the last time.
Bill, did you draft this, or was, did town council see this?
The thick one, the very thick one, the invitation. The invitation for bids is the one that I drafted based on what we did last time, which was done by town council. And then...
Which restricts use to mixed use?
Yes.
That's what number four does in the original one, possibly bought by adjacent to butter.
You go to the one that we handed you tonight?
Yeah. Yeah, without reading the whole thing right now, it's just that, that paragraph.
Four.
The condition is possibly restricted, zoning. Should it possibly be combined with the abutting parcels? The combined use must be pursuant to a special permit. Should it possibly be bought by an adjacent to butter? The parcel must be redeveloped by the purchaser as a mixed-use development. Minimum 4,000 square feet. So I guess either way, we're saying it has to be mixed use. The only bid will accept for this. Because it really, the only way we can sell it is that...
Because A said, number one said that it has to meet zoning. And the zoning is not, the zoning is commercial.
Yeah, but town meeting is, town meeting has restricted the sale to only be mixed use. So we can't sell it without another town meeting vote for anything other than mixed use, can we? I don't care what the zoning says.
You would have to go back and change Article 48 of 2007.
Right, but, but that authorizes us to sell, so we can't even put a request out to sell that's in violation of that.
Right. Do we have a copy of that article, Andy?
I wouldn't think.
Well, we're looking at that issue. Shouldn't this be two, A, B, and C? Shouldn't three become C? Because you're really, this is all if it's bought by the adjacent to butter.
It's three.
So three is if the parcel's bought by the adjacent to butter. Which is, isn't that the same thing as number two? Well, I guess it's not, because that's, somebody could buy the whole, they have to buy the Connollys in order to comply with number two.
No, because one, one, if you bought it by...
Yeah, I think one is okay.
One's going to, if you just want to buy it and you want to do something commercial.
Right.
Then it says, should the parcel be combined? You could go A, B, and C.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I think so would be one, and then two, A, B, and C.
Okay.
Yeah. But this is a, you raised a more fundamental question than this.
And the last, the last thing I'd like to talk about is the minimum asking price of the appraised value.
Thank you.
Yes, and, and again, I, I can't...
And by the way, the appraised value came in at 240,000.
That's right. It's, it's been my understanding, although I would defer to Katie, because she, you know...
I'm sorry, I...
You're, you're the attorney, not me, that, that we cannot, under Mass General law, that we cannot accept a, a bid or sell surplus real estate for less than its appraised value.
We'd have to check the statute, I mean, it sounds right, but...
Yeah, I mean, that's what I've been told, but...
But then, and I know Milton is not Boston, but in Boston, there is some sort of a bylaw that states you can sell it for less than the appraised value if it's an improvement to a specific neighborhood.
Right, and, and that could be under an urban renewal. That that's all, yeah, again, I'm certainly far from being an expert in any of this stuff, but...
Right, but this is some question that we, we should really have answered.
All right, so the...
Can this be sold for less than the appraised value?
On the point that Tom raised, so the vote, assuming it was voted as recommended.
Recommended, right.
It says, "The purchaser of such property shall be required, as a condition of the sale, to construct a mixed commercial and residential building on such parcel, alone or in conjunction with the adjoining land."
So I would think we'd have to reject any, any use of the building that was...
Mixed use and, and commercial?
Well, mixed, mixed commercial and residential, so that it would have to be at least in part residential.
Yeah, I mean, this is the recommendation, I guess there's always, I, I don't, this is a few years ago, I don't know if anyone recalls it. They could have been, I remember them into this on the floor of town meeting. We, we just need to make sure we have the final vote of the town meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't recall either, obviously, but...
You look into that for the 21st? We'll have to revisit this on the 21st, I think.
Sounds that way.
Yeah. And also find out about the minimum asking price. If that can be changed to, we can sell it for less than the minimum asking price. Something is only worth what market dictates, right?
That's true. Yeah.
Okay, so how does this, how does that affect our dates, then?
Well, the 28th, I think.
It doesn't affect the dates, okay.
Just the 28th. So you can bring this back on the 21st, it'll be okay.
So we'll have those answered by the 21st, then we'll vote it, and then it'll go on the register on the 28th.
Yeah, no changes to that.
Okay.
All right. Everybody good? Next item on the agenda is a discussion on the Massport meeting, the town administrator.
Yes. The Massport meeting on August 2nd, Friday at 4:00 PM. It was approximately a two-hour, little over two hours. It started at 4:00 and ended at 6:15. The members in attendance were Thomas Glynn, who's the executive director, CEO of Massport, Fabio Leo, Director of Aviation and Planning, Nancy Donahue, Manager of Government Affairs, Betty DeRocher, Director of Strategic Planning, Jose Mesa, Director of Community Relations, Cheryl Lightman, Co-Chair of Milton Citizens Against Aviation Impact, Cindy Christensen, Member of Citizens Against Aviation Impact, Phil Joe Henning, the other Co-Chair of Milton Citizen Against Aviation Impact, Dr. and Mrs. Nicholas Zerves, who are members of the Milton Citizen Against Aviation Impact, David Godine, the alternate CAC member, Rebecca Ashby, who is a legislative aide to Senator Brian Joyce and myself. And I think that, you know, we all were very appreciative of the time that Mr. Glynn and the other officials gave to us for this meeting. I'll kind of briefly go over some of the topics that were discussed at this meeting. We discussed the airplane noise and the potential health issues from the resulting increased traffic over Milton. We talked about Milton being adversely impacted by the arrivals on the fours. And it's, what we felt was unnecessary and unacceptable, that the pain should be shared by all communities. And there should be fairness across the region. Massport, they did recognize that the fours were overused.
Fours meaning four left and four right?
Four left and four right, yes. They explained that runway use is frequently, is determined by wind, weather, aircraft performance, demand, if traffic control conditions. And Massport felt that Milton had been silent for a number of years on the impact of airplane noise in our town. And they suggested that we consider partnering, partnering with other communities surrounding us in, in order to lobby for relief from, of the FAA and Massport for the runway, the four right and four left runways, when the weather permits and the winds permit. We also discussed the infrastructure improvements at Massport. They did say that, you know, Massport is, is in an urban area. It's, it's not like a lot of other airports that are designed with a lot more open space. So they do have some restrictions on, on their runways. Some of their runways have limited use. I think it's, they're on runway 23, there are wind restrictions. Cheryl Lightman requested that the, that Massport do some more infrastructure work on their runways. They felt that they had just put a substantial amount of infrastructure work into the RNAV runway 33L, and they do not have any other infrastructure work targeted in the near, near future. We did discuss a little bit about the noise complaint line, that it is, it's a line to collect data because the FAA, everything the FAA does is from a data standpoint, data collection standpoint. So we did, we did talk about that it shouldn't be used as a 911 hotline center, that people shouldn't continually just call, you know, one call after another, that it, again, is, is to register complaints for data collection. We did talk about the six-month study for runway 33L and the value of extending that study out another six months. Because the, the study is through June, June through December, in that time period, we won't really get the full impact of runway 33L. So we asked that, so we asked that they extend that study for another six months. They said that the request would have to come from our legislative officials and not the town. So I have reached out to our legislative delegation, requesting that they send letters to the FAA, requesting that they extend that study period for runway 33L for an additional six months. We also discussed assessment of noise and other technical type of questions. The assessment of noise was flawed. The committee, the citizen committee, felt the assessment of noise was flawed because we only have one noise monitor in the town of Milton. There's very limited noise monitors on the South Shore. But our noise monitor is over in East Milton, and so we have nothing on the western side of the town. Massport did recognize this, and they are willing to work with us and put in a temporary noise monitor over by, under the runway 33L path flight over near Curry College. But it does have to be put in an area where there's not a lot of noise. In other words, it wouldn't be near the college because of all the games and the loudspeaker, or near lawn moors, or, in order to collect the data correctly. It has to be in kind of a, an area where there's not a lot of noise surrounding it. So they will be reaching out to us and working with us to find a location to put that second noise monitor in. Some of the other technical questions, we, we didn't want to get bogged down at that meeting with Cindy Christensen. I started over some of the technical questions that she had brought out in the report. The, the SB report, the environmental study report. So we agreed that she and Fabio will speak offline to those technical questions. So I, I don't know if they've discussed any of that to date or not. We talked a little bit about the PRAAS system, which is the preferential runway assignment system, which is the playbook that Massport is supposed to be running the airport under at this time. But Massport felt that PRAAS is really outdated. And it, in April of 2012, the CAC by a majority vote abandoned the PRAAS and as a system that was not working. And what this Phase III technical portion of the CAC study is, is working with now is what's called the Bland, which is the Boston Logan Airport Noise System, which will become a new playbook for the tower to, to be able to control what airline, what airlines land on what runways. And again, it's going to be outlined by the, the wind because planes have to take off into the wind and land into the wind. So it's wind, weather, demand, and fairness. And again, fairness to all communities, because as Massport said, if... And again, fairness to all communities, because as Mass Port said, if we're not getting the planes over us, then hell's calling Mass Port, because they're getting the planes over them. So I think that the meeting went fairly, fairly well, there were some, some issues that they were not able to answer. Again, it was more technical questions from the report, the environmental study report. But, you know, I implore people to call the noise hotline number, because again, you know, Milton has been kind of silent on airplane noise, and like anything, if, if you're not going to complain, and the other communities are complaining, you're going to get the airplane noise over your community. So the airplane noise complaint number is 617-561-3333, and it's staffed from 7:00 AM to 4:30 PM on business days.
Good job, Anne Marie.
Now, I, I know that you did reach out, so you may want to talk about that.
I wanted to apprise the board. So then I reached out to the four civic associations in Dorchester that are directly under runway four as well, the Lower Mills, Cedar Grove, Pope's Hill, and Port Norfolk. And they have agreed to allow me to come to their September meetings. They're very much interested in coming on board with the town of Milton and getting the phone calls and the letters into Mass Port and the FAA going forward.
Good.
Once they learn that, I guess the terminology they use is that we're, we've been asleep in Milton and in Dorchester.
I, I think when we do it, we, well, first of all, we know we need our, our state legislators and our federal legislators on board with us, but I, I think we also need to do our homework and need hard facts. I mean, to sit there and just say without anything to, to back it up that...
But I think we have those, Tom.
We probably do, we have to make sure that we, that we have them in such a way that they're presentable, I think.
Right. Oh, I agree, we can't just go in and blow hot air.
Right.
I think Mr. Godin and the citizen group, right, our own Milton citizen group can probably help us assemble some of that, yes.
And Cindy Christensen has all the statistics.
Yes.
You know, the increase in airline traffic on runway four over the last five years.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's the route we have to pursue. I think trying to pursue that the meat is on registering correct and stuff like that is, is a much harder and probably fruitless attack, you know, it's...
Somebody was telling me that, you know, if an airplane goes over the town of Brookline, everyone in Brookline is calling, and they don't go over again. So that's what, that's what we have to get to.
Right, and I think like David Godin said, we're never going to eliminate 100% of air traffic coming over the town, you can't do it.
All we want to do is reduce it.
No, we just want, we want to cheer across...
You can't get rid of runways four left and right.
Right.
But we can reduce the amount of traffic going in there.
Yep, and us and Quincy just happen to be close to the harbor that they basically come in over.
And then those four sections of Dorchester.
Yeah.
Right under it.
And we've advertised for somebody to fill Judy Kennedy's seat on the CAC.
Yes.
So I did see the ad in the paper, so we...
And we still reach out, trying to do that.
And you're going to reach out.
Yeah, we should just make another pitch for that, anybody watching who, especially if someone who has some experience in this area, a lot of knowledge in this area, that's really what we would like, so that the person can be very effective for advocating for Milton's interests.
Good point. What's up with this one?
Mr. Chair, just to go back to the previous article, just, I did look up, this is the Attorney General, the Inspector General's 30B manual on real property dispositions, and basically, just reading from a small section, "Your local jurisdiction may offer property for lease or sale in order to promote a public purpose rather than to raise revenue based on longstanding interpretations of the Massachusetts Constitution. If you intend to dispose of real property for less than fair market value, you must define a valid public purpose to be achieved. Individuals or private organizations may realize incidental benefits from the disposition of the property, but the primary purpose must be to promote public welfare." So that's the, that's the standard you're up against if you try and sell it for less than fair market value. Now, the question is, is if you offer it for appraised value, and it does in earlier sections indicate how you establish fair market value, which is the appraisal rule. But if you're going to sell it for, if you do offer it for sale for, and nobody bids on it, does that mean that your appraisal was wrong and maybe fair market value is less? You know, I, I suppose that is true, but...
That's what we, that's the door I'd love to leave open.
But, but to initially offer it for less than the appraised value, I don't think you can do without it meeting this section, that there is a public purpose, and that's the predominant reason for the sale. And certainly, if, you know, if it were an urban renewal area and a blighted area and everything else, then, you know, you do have a public purpose, much more so.
That's exactly what it is, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
It is urban renewal, and it's a blighted area.
Yeah, I mean, again, I, that's a question that would have to be answered by somebody other than me.
Yeah, we have a week to look into that.
We do, yeah. I'm just mindful of the fact that, once this building goes up, it's going to generate over 150 grand a year in taxes. Right now, we're getting about 10. We won't long be making up that difference, you know, if we do sell it for less than the appraised value. I'm not suggesting we sell it for less than the appraised value, but I'm saying if that's, if that's what we get in a package, we're going to...
We, I think we should ask town council, specifically with that, this clause in mind.
Yeah, we want the additional tax revenue, but we want a building that's a quality building, and that's going to be attractive for the neighborhood there, so...
And public amenity.
Yes, yes.
So we get the taxes, and we get a public amenity out.
Is that enough of a public purpose? To offer it for less than...
Oh, I was really addressing the other point, yeah.
We'll discuss that on the 21st again.
And Anne Marie, thank you for going to that meeting, that was a Friday at 4:00, I didn't drive all the way into East Boston for this meeting. I know.
You fell on the sword for us.
Yes, I think she changed other plans to go to that, so thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
Number 18, discussion, request to amend the common victualers license for Dunkin' Donuts.
I'll, I'll read the motion, and then I certainly have some questions. To amend the Board of Selectmen's April 18, 2006 meeting vote concerning the restrictions imposed on Dunkin' Donuts for the issuance of a common victuals license, to read as follows. Business will be conducted between the hours of 4:00 AM and 11:00 PM. And this is asking, what, for an opening, oh, I'm sorry, this was seconded.
Well, I'll second it for discussion, but I, I have some concerns about this, so I, I'm not...
So they, they want to open to the general public at 4:00?
Sounds that way.
Whereas now, they can be open to basically, they, they can...
Presently, they're open at 5:00, Tom.
Well, open to the public, but they, but they can be there at 4:00, I believe, to set up and...
Yeah, the license says they can receive deliveries starting at 4:00.
4:00. So if...
But they want to actually open the doors at 4:00?
Right, so does that mean we're pushing deliveries to 3:00 in the morning?
I think so.
I, I don't like that. I mean, if they, if they want to open at 4:00 and accept deliveries at 4:00, that may be a different...
Well, even if they want to do that, you know, there are residences not far from this area, I'd want to hear what the concern of the residences are, there some side streets here with houses that are...
So I did make some phone calls today, Katie, and I spoke to Fred Kelly, who's actually, he was on the wiring committee, and a very good friend of mine, he lives across the road from Dunkin' Donuts. He doesn't have a problem with it, because he doesn't hear it, he said. But he would have liked to, and this is my pet Pete, he would have liked to have gotten notice from Dunkin' Donuts, he would like to have had a community meeting, and, and second of all, I'd like to see somebody from Dunkin' Donuts here.
Yeah, I agree with both of them.
You know, you, you need somebody here, they're requesting to be to open earlier, there's nobody here representing them, I think that's...
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would think, and I guess we've got the motion on the table, we'd probably have to vote it down, and then, but my, my preference would be to maybe reach out to the neighbors and, and have a mini-public hearing, if there's any interested people in speaking, and invite Dunkin' Donuts ownership to the table as well at our next meeting, and...
Yeah, I would like to get neighborhood input on this, I, you know, how many other Dunkin' Donuts are open at 4:00 that are in somewhat, it's a business area, but it's a residential area as well, and, yeah, I think we do want residential input on this.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, that's, that's an early time to open and have traffic in and out of the square. I'm sure it's probably not going to be very much traffic in and out of the square, but there are houses not far from there.
So...
Want to withdraw the motion, or? We can either withdraw or just vote it down.
Let's vote it down.
So any further discussion? All in favor? Oppose?
Aye.
Aye, I'm opposed.
It's unanimous.
So now I'll make, now I'll make a motion that we bring, that we, at our next meeting, have a public hearing with concerned butters to discuss the potential moving of the opening hours of Dunkin' Donuts.
The impact on the neighborhood, and a representative...
Is a public hearing the right, the right thing? Yeah, public meeting, I think, too.
Public meeting, okay.
Or we could send...
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, maybe push it off to the meeting after that, that's fine.
Did I, did anyone from Dunkin' Donuts contact the office about this, or was it just in writing, they did?
Yes, they contacted, there was a, somebody contacted me from Redding, which is, I guess, the home office of Dunkin' Donuts, and wanted to know what the process was to do this, and I said they had to send something in writing to the board so that I can make an request, which is what we did. It's, it's up to you, as the licensing authority, to go through whatever process you need to, to, to be satisfied with their request, if you want to grant it.
I mean, I think one option might be pressed to require them to notify the neighbors.
And have...
That's usually the...
And set up some, they should probably set up some kind of a meeting with their neighbors, too.
Can they send a meeting?
That would be an option, I would think.
That's fine, I mean, as long as we get public input, I really don't care how it's a problem.
And I think going forward, anytime that you have a time change on an establishment like that, there should be legal representation here, or at least somebody representing the company.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Has an impact on a neighborhood.
Yeah, it sounds like this might be better for one of the September meetings.
Okay.
Moving forward, number 19, Curry College Pilot Program. Guess we got a check in the amount of $55,193.
I'll move that we accept the FY14 Curry College voluntary payment in lieu of taxes, payment in the amount of $55,193.
Second. Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Number 20, the approval. Oh, we actually did number 20 earlier, that's good. Number 21, community events approval.
Move to approve the use of town streets and ways for the 15th Annual Monster Dash in memory of Sam Chikalo to be held on Sunday, October 27, 2013, rain date November 3, 2013, beginning and ending at Cunningham Park.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, on the next one, I'm going to recuse myself on this one, my sister's on the Council on Aging Board and is very involved with this walk, so I will step out.
Move to approve the use of town streets and ways for the 3rd Annual Fit-for-Life 5K Walk Run to benefit the Council on Aging Transportation Program to be held on Saturday, October 5, at 9:00 AM at the Senior Center.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
There she comes. I'm going to leave this one to you, since it is your alma mater, Katie, the third one.
Okay, I'll approve the use of the town streets and ways for Fontbonde Academy's annual breast cancer walk to be held on Sunday, September 29, 2013, from 9:00 AM until noon, to begin and end at Fontbonde Academy.
Second. Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Number 22, committee appointments.
I'll move to approve the appointment of Lieutenant Mark Alba to the Granite Ave Study Committee to serve through March 2014.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
I'll move to approve the appointment of Robert, is it Mueller?
Mueller.
Close enough. 38 Houston Ave to serve as the regional fair, to serve on the Regional Fair Housing Committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Number 23, approval of the state, special state election warrant. And this is for the, Dan...
These ones, one and two. Linda D'Arcene to replace Linda...
Remember last night was Dan Cullinan, and he's in the, in the finals, I guess, with two, two independents.
So I'll move to approve the September 10, 2013, special state election warrant for a representative in the 12th Suffolk District to replace Representative Linda Dorcinafori.
Second. Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 24, executive session. I'll make a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining strategy with regard to AFSCME Local 1395 Council 93, and the Milton Professional Management Association believing that having this discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body. Second. And to return to open session only for the purpose of adjournment. All in favor?
Yes.
Mrs. Conlan?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen, yes, we're in executive session.